Okay. Okay, Terry, you ready? All right, I'll call this meeting of the Rockport Select Board to order for Tuesday, April nineteenth, twenty sixteen.
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 Yeah, whoa.
Jesus. Did he say nineteen?
Yeah, he did.
I'm trying to get beyond things here, okay? Nineteen?
It's a transition.
Just bear with me here, okay?
The terms have expired.
Okay, we're gonna start over. I'm gonna call this meeting of the Select Board to order for April nineteenth, twenty sixteen. Couple of items. The next regular Select Board meeting will be Monday, May ninth, twenty sixteen. Seventeen, seven PM here at the Opera House. There will be a town meeting immediately before that, and I'll get to that later. Agenda changes. Do we have any agenda changes for this evening? Nope. I'll go on. Public comment. Public comment should be directed at issues not under discussion on this evening's agenda. Comment from the public will be welcome prior to each agenda item. Further comment will be granted only by permission from the Board. All public comment should be brief and to the point, and we are holding a public hearing this evening in which we will take public comment from everybody who wishes to speak on any of these items. So, does anyone wish to make public comment on any item that is not on the agenda this evening? Hearing none. We will move forward. Because this is a special meeting, we will not have most of the items that normally are on an agenda, to include the Town Manager's report. So we will move right on to unfinished business, and that is the approval of the contract with Reed &amp; Company Architects. And at our last meeting, there was one item that had been omitted from the packet that was really what we needed to have in order to make a motion, and that was the rate, the fee rate, the fee schedule. Yes. And that we have with us tonight along with the contract, which the Town Managers informed us is the standard contract for architectural services, and the fee schedule is the standard fee schedule for projects, so.
And you can see there's a bunch of different fees there, and it depends on the type of project, the size of the project, how much is being spent, and it's the standard boilerplate contract and standard fee structure. And that's where it gets into the eight point eight percent, and then what we'd be obligated for fifteen percent of the eight point eight percent to get to the schemat-- no, it's not schematic design, it's the conceptual design that we'd need to go to town meeting. No, it is schematic. We've already done conceptual. It's the next step is conceptual, uh, it was schematic, and then the final step is building design.
I move to approve the architectural contract with Reed &amp; Company Architects for the library and allow the Town Manager to sign the contract.
Second.
It's been moving seconded. I would like to ask one question. Typically, when we have a motion like this, we don't use the word "allow." Typically, we either direct or authorize the Town Manager to do something.
Okay.
And normally, I wouldn't make a motion, but at this point, I would like to, I will make the motion to change the word "allow" to "direct" the Town Manager.
Second retracts.
Seconded that. Is there discussion on that? Is that acceptable, or would it be the preference to authorize? There are subtle differences.
Authorize is fine. What I did is I retracted the second so that you could start a new motion.
Or you can second his.
Or I'll second his, so.
His amendment, and then we vote on the amendment, and then that's what we're voting on.
Yep, second the amendment.
Okay.
Now, we vote on the amendment, and then we go back and vote on the question.
Well, we have discussion on the amendment. Is "direct" acceptable, or would "authorize" be preferable?
I think "direct" is good.
I think it's fine if I were.
Okay. All in favor of the motion to change the word "allow" to "direct"? That is unanimous. Now we are back to the motion where we will direct the Town Manager to sign the contract. Any further discussion on that?
I do.
Yes, if I could. That's what we have discussion for.
No one else is, I mean, it's just weird that this fee schedule is dated nineteen eighty-nine.
That's what it was, that's when it was adopted?
And they, I mean.
It's percentages, so.
It's all percentages, which is why I was like, okay, but I just thought that was weird. Okay. I have another one. Eleven point four on page sixteen. And I apologize, I'm kind of just looking for clarity on a few of these things.
I'm not sure I can give it to you, but go ahead.
Compensation will be at cost, no additional markups. I understand that I read that wrong in the car. Okay.
While driving.
No, I was in the passenger seat. I was for that one. Okay, I somehow put "not" in there. Compensation will be at no cost. I did a dyslexic thing.
That would be nice, but.
Yeah, I was like, great, great. Okay, so that answers my second question. And. Oh, there's on eleven point nine on page eighteen, top of the page. The, it ends, "Using and maintaining the project as follows," and then there's a big blank space. Was there nothing in there?
There's nothing, again, this is just boilerplate?
Yeah.
This is just a boilerplate contract.
And that's basically if the town wanted to go ahead and use the drawings for something else and cut them out of the deal, we would describe that in that space.
Okay, and then I believe my last question is below there on the payments of the architect. Unless otherwise agreed, payments will be made on a monthly in proportion. Does that contrast with the lump sum referenced earlier? Are we doing a lump sum, or are we doing monthly payments? Because at one portion in the beginning, they talk about a lump sum payment, but here they're talking about monthly payments.
Can't answer that.
Okay.
Yeah, Tracy.
I have a question. On page seventeen, eleven point five, the written-out numbers do not match the number numbers.
Ooh, good catch.
They both add up to one hundred percent, but the first two don't match. And I just noticed that. I went over it, and I did not see that the first time.
You're right, that's been there all along.
It's supposed to be fifteen percent.
Three do.
Yes, but the first two don't. I know, because when I looked, I was like, no, fifteen percent, ten percent, no.
They're front-end loading the.
And I had one final one, and I promise that's my last one. Page ten, four point three point three. It talks about these limits for additional services, and so if they go past these limits, we get charged for additional services. My question is specific to three and four. These two inspections for any portion of the work to determine whether such portions of the work is substantially completed in accordance with blah, blah, blah. So does that mean we're allotted two inspections for all the doors, and two inspections for all the windows, and two inspections for this, or are we allowed two inspections for any addition of those? Like, if we do three inspections for the windows, that's one inspection past two, so that would be an additional charge, but if we do inspections on the walls, do those all add up? Am I making sense?
I wish you would have asked this stuff last, at our last meeting, so that we could have had answers, because as we left our last meeting, all we were looking at or looking for was what we would have to pay, which is what was provided. Now we have all these other questions, and frankly, I don't have any answers.
I don't either. It's this, again, it's, John went through it, and it's the standard contract. There's nothing unusual about this contract.
The only portion was the "any" portion, and I just, Jeff, you gonna take a stab at?
Yeah, I mean, having dealt with this a little bit in other lives, this is basically to make sure that the client doesn't turn into Bridezilla.
Right, right.
But also, it could be rendered moot by the very strong suggestion that the ad hoc committee received to hire a clerk of the works, at which point the clerk of the works is going to, is their very nature of their job is to examine all of this stuff. So the architect is relieved of some of their duties. They'll be there, and they'll want to make sure that the quality build is there, but a lot of the nuances of that will have been rendered moot by virtue of a clerk of the works.
Do you envision that person's pay being less than potential additional services?
It turns out in big projects like this that their pay is worth every single penny, both for schedule, keeping on schedule, and for very early detection and problem-solving of issues. So probably not, you know, because it's not something that automatically people do. There probably is more money spent at first blush.
Right.
But everybody, everybody that I've talked to that's been in large multimillion-dollar
Keeps it on schedule, keeps it on budget.
It's absolutely worth it, yeah.
Either clerk of the works or project manager.
As I say, I mean, Camden tried to do the snowball without that, and they had major problems. And they, it ended up costing them a lot of money in the long run, so. I'm okay with this section. I think the.
Yep.
Place where the worded numbers don't agree with the number numbers, I think, I don't know, maybe we can ask, is there an attorney in the house? I think when it's written out, the written-out one prevails, but I'm not sure.
There's a table here that breaks down the, it has the word fifteen, it has parenthetically ten. The next one describes a thing, has the word twenty, twenty, parenthetically, the number twenty, twenty-five. So while each of the tables add up to a hundred, the apportionment is different, and of course, our biggest point of jeopardy is that we might, you know, if the creek rises, we might only spend the first X amount, and the question is, is it ten or fifteen percent?
Yeah, he was very clear that it's fifteen percent. The first, the first piece is fifteen percent, so that's just a mistake.
So that's just a matter of clearing that up, and.
So Ken's question is sort of akin to.
I think the easiest way is to vote it. Vote it the way you want it to be, say, I'm voting with your understanding of the language that says.
Well, we were under the understanding that that part was fifteen percent.
Yeah.
So it makes perfect sense to make that fifteen percent and then make the rest of it not.
In fact, actually, Rick had mentioned there was fifteen percent of the eight point eight.
So we're now on record as, by virtue of recording, that we are not going to contest that as a fifteen, so everyone's happy. I mean, the architects are happy because that's what it is.
We could make a, I could make a quick amendment to the motion to clarify that if you want, and then we could vote on it and make it clear.
If you want, you can make that amendment, a friendly amendment.
At the same time, the way I look at it is that we're directing the Town Manager to do this. He's going to come back to us if there's some substantial change that they expect, or if the clarification is, you know, if they suddenly say, oh, thirty percent, he's going to come back to us and say, no, I couldn't sign it, because.
And he's already told us it's going to be fifteen percent.
Right, so the worst scenario, we've already talked about, and we feel reasonably comfortable with, let's leave it in Rick's hands.
Okay. Are we satisfied with that, agreeable to it?
I'm good.
Then we have the motion on the floor to, in effect, direct the Town Manager to sign the agreement. Okay, all in favor? That is unanimous. I know, now that we've messed everything up on my thing, we now move on to the public hearings. And we have a number of public hearings this evening that we have to do. This is all the way business trans, is considered and moves forward. The first item is going to be the public hearing on proposed ordinance articles three through ten, which will appear on the June twenty sixteen annual town meeting warrant. And I would say, these are the items that will appear on the secret ballot that we will vote on, on the Tuesday of town meeting, as opposed to when we get later on, when we talk about the budget, which will appear at the town meeting on Wednesday evening of town meeting. So with that, and the way town, way these public hearings usually proceed is that I will open the meeting and then go by article by article, asking first on Article Three, does anyone wish to speak in favor of? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of? Does anyone wish to speak neither for nor against? Close that part, move on to Article Four, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, until we complete that. So with that in mind, I will open the public hearing on what will be Article Three, which is currently worded, "Shall the town accept the recommendation of Midco Solid Waste Corporation, otherwise known as MCSWC, for handling the disposition of municipal solid waste after the termination of the current contract with Penobscot Energy Recovery Corporation, otherwise known as PERC, on March thirty-first, twenty eighteen?" I will also say at this time that the recommendation of Midco Solid Waste is that the delivery of our municipal solid waste, those what we think of as yellow bags, will go to EcoMain in the Portland area. With that said, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this article? Hearing no one wishing to speak in favor of this article, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this article? We have a member who here tonight would wish to speak. Would you come up and introduce yourself at the podium, please?
Hi, my name is Allison McKeller. I am not a resident of Rockport, I'm a resident of Camden, but as a member of one of the four town municipal, four town municipal group that we have, I've been following this very carefully from the beginning. I've been to many meetings in Hampton. I do the website for the Hampton Citizens Coalition. They had a big landfill next to them for thirty-five years. We've been sending our trash to Hampton for a long time, and they've had a number of complications with it. So I've sort of taken it upon myself to try and be an advocate for them when I can, which has caused me to learn lots about this. I started out in extreme opposition to Fiber Right and the proposal of the MRC, which many people probably don't know, I know you guys know what the MRC is, but it's another municipal group. It's, we have this group of four towns here, but we also belong to another group. And so when I see this on the town warrant, the way it says, you know, just to accept the recommendation of the Midco Solid Waste Corporation, I think, oh, it's too bad because it doesn't include that language about the fact that we're actually leaving another group. So, and not accepting the recommendation of a group of municipal volunteers that has worked very hard for many years to come up with what they believe to be the best thing that we can do after the contract with PERC ends. So I started out very much opposed to Fiber Right, because I didn't think it should be in Hampton, but after learning a lot, questioning all of the MRC members, ad nauseam, basically, as an environmental activist, which I see myself as, I came around, basically because of the issue of climate change. For me, it's all about the environment, and, you know, we can argue about what's best for the environment. There are many ways of looking at it. You can say that it, there are many ways of measuring that, but at the end of the day, we have to look at, you know, a concrete way, and we can measure that with carbon footprint. And one of the things that really concerns me about the EcoMain proposal is that, basically, we're, you know, we're signing up to drive our trash nearly twice as far, increase our carbon footprint substantially through that. We know that that's going to cost us just the haul, you know, the actual tipping fees are basic, are very similar with Fiber Right and with EcoMain, but the difference in hauling costs is about eighty thousand dollars a year. That's with diesel prices the way they currently are. So when the Midco Solid Waste Corporation said, oh, you know, we like Fiber Right, we think that if everything turns out okay, it's going to be great, but we just can't take the risk, we just can't take the risk. You know, for me, I'd like to look at what is that actual risk? Is it, you know, there's certainly a financial risk. So we know it's going to cost us right now more to go with EcoMain. We know we're going to be paying that. It could be significantly more if diesel prices go up a lot. What's the risk with Fiber Right? Okay, even the absolute hundred percent worst-case scenario, say it just completely flops, there's, yes, our trash would go to a landfill for a little bit. Now, you can argue about how bad landfills are. I've heard throughout this whole process, a lot, a lot of talking about, what does California do? Oh, California separates everything out all really well, and it's working so well for them. California also uses almost exclusively landfills, because every, they don't, they don't want incinerators there because of the air quality. So there are worse things, and I'm not saying incinerators are worse than landfills, but landfill isn't, like, sending our stuff to a landfill for just a little bit from even an environmental perspective is not the worst thing that could ever happen. Even if it were a complete disaster, we could lose some of that one point five million dollars that we have in the MRC fund because of our PERCs, you know, rebates and whatever. That would still be, we would be losing less than the amount of money that we're going to put in over a twenty-year contract with EcoMain. You spend eighty thousand dollars a year, say diesel prices stay the same for twenty years, we're going to spend eighty thousand dollars, times twenty, that already gets us past the one point five million dollars that we could, in a totally worst-case scenario, lose through the MRC. So, you know, we can look at the likelihood of all of these things happening. We know that right now EcoMain's going to cost us a lot more. So if you're going to do that for an environmental reason, and say we can choose to go to EcoMain because it's more environmental, then I think it should be a really, really strong argument about the environmental factors of it. And it's, you know, it's going to cause us, we could, I've heard, we can reduce our waste. We can all do all this waste reduction because of EcoMain's educational programs. Yes, EcoMain has great educational programs. It works great for Portland. It would also require us to switch to single-source recycling if we want to take advantage of those educational programs. That's going to cost us thirty-eight dollars a ton for our recyclables. I'm not against single-source recycling, it may make sense for us, but when we add the hauling cost on top of that, you know, we have to figure out, where are we going to pay for that? Are we going to pay for that by raising bag fees? We already know we're going to have to, or are we going to increase the burden to taxpayers? So if we're about to tell everybody that your bag fees are going up, or the, you know, the amount that each town pays is going up, I think, and it's for environmental reasons, then the, you know, the reasoning should be really strong, and shouldn't probably include incredible amounts of dirty trucks hauling it all to Portland for a supposed environmental benefit. So I would just ask you to, I know you've sort of made your decisions already, but I think that the learning curve is extremely steep on this issue, and it took me a year and a half to go from extreme opposition, going to all of these meetings, researching all these things, to say, you know what, maybe, you know, I was, environmental activists like to be against things a lot of the time, but, you know, when I came around and the experts, the people that really know this the best, Jim, our, you know, our facility manager, who's been, is an incredible advocate for the environment, has been doing this for, you know, thirty years, to think that we can all make that decision better in a short amount of time with busy people that can't afford to be experts in this, I just, I think the decision is a serious one to leave the MRC.
So Allison, if you could do just one favor, you speak with passion and eloquence, and you refer to your environmental activism. Could you just give us a very quick bio of all the things that you've learned about reuse and recycling?
Oh, I would love to. Cut me off when.
Well, just, you know, just a overview, so that we understand.
This is my dream, yes. Yeah, you know, I've learned that it's more complicated than you think, basically. I came in, I've been attending Midco Solid Waste Board meetings for a long, a couple of years now. When I got there, I thought, well, if we just do this, and this, and this, and this, and this. You know, I was depressed about our recycling rates being so low, and I came in and told Jim all these things I thought we should be doing. And they're doing this there, and this there. And there's just a lot more going on. Experts disagree on this. I listened to what Lissa does in EcoMain in Portland, and it's wonderful, it works great there. They have, it's more of an urban setting, they have curbside recycling, curbs, they have another company that does curbside composting. It's, it's a different situation. You have to look at it, we can't say, oh, they do this in California, so I know it's possible. Well, you know, is it, does it really make sense for us to send a truck around to compost and separate everything out? How much of that are we really going to get? It's great for everybody to compost in their backyard, absolutely, but is that environmental benefit the same as truck, you know, putting in public, all of our public parks, a composting bin, and then paying somebody to go pick it up? And all of these things, you know, it all, it all costs money, and sometimes environmentalists do things a little bit for the wrong reasons. It's like, this feels so good to me. That's why I've been against single-source recycling for so long, because it feels so good to, you know, I want everybody in my house to really think about each little thing that they're recycling, and it's like, oh, what number is this, and where does that go? And so I have this educational benefit of it all, it's great for me. I love learning about where the number two plastic goes, and, but the reality is that, you know, I can only change people so much. So if, you've got to look at it with the numbers, too. Okay, yes, EcoMain, great, eighty, we're going to spend eighty thousand dollars more, and they're going to give us all these education programs, and it's going to be fast again, we're going to look just like Portland. It's like, oh, well, I don't know, eighty thousand dollars a year, we could probably, probably hire a pretty great couple of education people in our own community to help us craft something that works well in this community. We have massive amounts of summer residents. Are we going to get, you know, a lot of this has been about the organics, and yeah, we might not be allowed to start a food composting program at our own facility if we go with Fiber Right. And now everybody, all of a sudden, really is passionate about composting. We can do that right now, for all these years with PERC, we've been able, we could, you know, you can compost, you can, but nobody's wanted to. It's, the minute you say, oh, you might not be able to do this, all of a sudden, everybody wants to compost. Are we going to get everybody that comes here for the summer on this big program, and at every, I don't know, it's just, you have to look, what I've learned is that it's more complicated, and I don't have all the answers. And so there are experts who've been studying this really hard, and when you decide to go against the experts that have been looking at it for a really, really long time, I don't think that decision should be taken lightly, and I don't think that there was enough discussion. I think the people at Midco Solid Waste Corporation are great, they know a lot, they've been dealing with lots of things, the landfill, we've got a lot of things, anyway, and I just don't think, I think it's, it's hard for them to know everything.
Jeff, that has answered your question?
Yeah, no, I was alluding to what you do in the other part of your life.
Oh, the other part of my life.
Yeah, but that's all right, no, you, that's, that's fine.
Oh, I'm on the Conservation Commission, I do the storm drains, I, you know, I dig through the trash.
Owen, did you have a question?
I did. I would make an assumption that you've given this or a similar pitch to the Camden Select Board, is that correct?
I haven't quite had my opportunity, but I do every, we haven't had a public hearing like this. I do feel that they know, I've sent them plenty of emails, and I, but we haven't had a, we haven't had this forum, but I.
Do you feel that your efforts have caused them to reconsider at all their decision?
No, I think that they talk about risk. Oh, because the snowball, because the snowball was such an environmental disaster, then that makes us, that somehow is going to influence our, you know, that's what I hear from, and to me, that's just like, kind of nonsense, and it's really frustrating to think that that's the level of discussion that's going on, because this has nothing to do with the snowball. And if you want to look at the mistakes that were made at the snowball, they were made by the Camden Select Board and maybe the Town Manager, and so that doesn't tell me that we should just automatically trust, you know, no, I do not, I feel that they're, you know, they don't know a lot of the details, they don't know what Covanta is, they don't know what, you know, they can't explain what biofuel is, so.
But they have taken their, made their decision. You said they haven't held a public hearing yet. Do you know when they will have one?
I think it should be coming right, yeah.
It's got to be soon.
Right, hopefully. I think they're going to try and push a bunch of public hearings together. Another one of my issues is water quality, and I think they're having a public hearing about the ducts and things like that, so. Hopefully, I don't know, put in a good word for a public hearing in Camden if you can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition?
Don't want to speak necessarily in opposition.
Would you come up to the podium? We have people that are, I assume, are watching at home, and your name?
So my name is Lissa Bitterman, I'm here from EcoMain, and I certainly don't want to speak in opposition, but there were a couple of things that Allison said that just factually I wanted to correct, and so I don't know if this is the right time to do. I don't know if this is the right time to do that, but just for the viewers at home and certainly for anyone here.
Okay, but maybe what your comments would be more appropriate under neither for nor against?
That, that's fine. I didn't know when I should say that, but I did just want to put that out there.
If you would hold on just a moment.
Sure.
Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition to this item? Yes, all right. And Lisa, you'll have your opportunity under neither for nor against.
Hi, my name's Maggie Christie and I am a resident of Rockport. I've been attending the, the dump board meetings for about six months and very much novice when it comes to trash and the future of what we're going to do with our trash once our, the perk agreement expires. But, you know, I, I feel strongly as Allison does, I don't think there was enough discussion. I, I think going with EcoMaine is, again, a very safe decision, but I think that Fiberite is the decision that would move us forward locally in our local community as well as the state. I think it's, again, to her point about the experts and the, the research that's been done, I just, I feel like entering into a 20-year contract with EcoMaine is, is really going to just tie our hands for a very long time. And a few years down the road, we're going to be wishing that we had taken more time in our decision. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition to this article? In hearing none, does anyone wish to speak neither for nor against?
So again, Lissa Bitterman from EcoMaine, and I just first want to state that I have huge respect for Allison. And as a resident, I'm just blown away by how engaged she is and how much she's learned. And so I'm not at all trying to go against what you're saying, I just want to make sure that everybody has accurate information. So one thing I just wanted to make clear is that the education programs that EcoMaine offers do not just come along with the recycling program. If communities or waste organizations sign up with EcoMaine, excuse me, for either their trash or recycling or both, the education programs are made available in full 100% force. So I just want everybody to be aware that those programs, if the solid waste is coming to EcoMaine, those programs are 100% available. The second thing with the single-sort recycling is that the $38 per ton tipping fee for single sort is currently our gate rate. What that means is that if anybody in the whole world wanted to drive across our gates and bring in single-sort recycling, we would accept it right now on kind of, it's called an at-will spot market. It means you don't have to have a contract, you'd have to have no previous relationship. You just want, you have material and you want to bring it to us. That cost currently is $38 a ton. For communities or consortiums of communities who decide to partner with us, we sign contracts which are more advantageous to the communities from a price perspective because it's committed tonnage, first of all, that we can count on, and secondly, because of our education programs, we can impact that tonnage and try any way to make it less contaminated with inappropriate items. And so the volume of effort from our staff and also from our sorting facility is less because the tonnage is more appropriate and more pure. So the single-sort contract that we're currently offering is a revenue share contract, revenue cost share, I should say. And what that means is that at the end of each month, we take the total amount of revenue that we have earned from the sale of our recyclables. We divide that by the total amount of tonnage that we process that month from everybody combined. That gives us a revenue per ton. We factor that revenue per ton through a matrix which takes into consideration our operating costs. And at the end of that, it kind of spits out a number that says, all right, EcoMaine, now you're whole, assuming you're whole, and if there's any extra, that's shared back with the communities who are contracted with us for recycling programs on a per-ton basis. However, if we're shy of covering our operating costs for any given month, then we would then also put out a bill to those communities whose recycling we process that month and say, we're sorry, we didn't earn enough money on the sale of our recyclables, we're shy by $10 a ton to cover our, our operating costs, so we would issue a bill. For the last, probably at this point, 42 months, we have been in a charge mode because the global commodities market is very, very poor. It follows oil prices. And so for several months at this point, we have been hovering around the $30 to $35 per ton mark. The, it's reset every month. We do the calculations again. So $30, $35 a ton charge is still not great. Gone are the days at the moment of us being able to pay 15, 20, 25, even upwards of $40 a ton. Hopefully, they'll come back. Conversely, if they come back, that means that oil prices have gone up, so then your diesel might be looking a little worse. So, you know, it's a very kind of global and holistic type of process, but I did want to just make the distinction between the gate rate of the tipping fee and the contract rate, which is always slightly more favorable to the communities who sign that. So those are just the two points that I wanted to clarify. Yes?
Two questions, actually, Lissa. Speaking of the gate, when somebody comes up to the gate that is not part of the, of your vendor relationship-
Yes.
And gives you a whole bunch of trash, and you're right where you can just process no more, what happens to that trash?
So if we are unable to accept that solid waste, we have to turn the customer away. And at that point, it is their discretion where they would like to take the solid waste. There is MWAC in Auburn, which is a waste-to-energy facility. There are also waste-to-energy facilities in Massachusetts. I do not advocate driving solid waste to Massachusetts. That carbon footprint would be atrocious. Yeah, I mean, there's landfills and those currently, while landfilling is at the bottom of the waste hierarchy, the state statute, which says peel off material at the highest rungs of the hierarchy, source reduction, reuse, recycle, compost, waste-to-energy, and lastly, landfill, while it is the least desirable method for handling solid waste, there is a place for it on the hierarchy.
And secondly, there's been a lot of talk tonight about educators and education. How many bodies do you have in the field and it's spread out over how many towns?
That's a great question, and we're sort of looking at uncharted territory right now with some of the mid-coast communities looking to us, because you've never really been what I would consider in our, our territory before. Currently, we have one full-time educator. His name is Leo Mayhew. Every summer, he hires an intern typically from University of Southern Maine who will go out and do some type of a special project. If we do gain the 6,000 tons of MSW coming from your communities and possibly from some of the other towns here, we, in my opinion, most definitely will have to be looking at staffing up to be able to manage the rollouts of those programs, the education of those programs. Internally, we've been talking about trying to set up and have nicely rolling along some type of program through universities to have educators that are gaining credit, who are actually be able to fan out into the field. While it's a complicated issue and there is a tremendous amount to learn, the teaching of what to recycle, what not to recycle, and to help people kind of understand how they can put their waste materials to a best and highest use becomes fairly rote after a little while. So I feel very confident that interns would be able to handle that. But most certainly, I would be in charge of all of the rollouts and I just can't imagine that we could do a really good job for you, the job that I'm promising, without staffing up. So I would be advocating for that.
Thank you. Oh, Owen, if I may, you said it was $38 for the single sort for your gate rate-
Gate rate.
-for non-member communities.
Non-member anybody, just person.
And the member you, you were alluding to, it's a more desirable number. What is that number? Or it changes on a month-to-month basis?
It changes on a month-to-month basis, as can the gate rate. Everything fluctuates with the market and we hit the reset button at the beginning of each month. There's also a national publication called the OBM, or it used to be called the Yellow Sheets, and that's put out by the pulp and paper industry. And it basically kind of forecasts the value of all the fiber products across the country based on ports and global travel and whatnot. So we basically are informed by the, by the OBM, we're informed by the oil prices. And at the end of the day, you know, it's just how much could we sell the material for? And, and that's shifting, but we only hit the reset per month. And definitely built into the revenue and cost-sharing contract is a more favorable price always for the communities. The gate rate will never be better than-
Can you give me like some, it's typically $5 less per ton, it's typically?
But Owen, what we are discussing now is municipal solid waste, not the recyclables.
Right.
The recyclables are totally out of this discussion because we handle them separately now over the transfer station. If we were to go to a single sort, that would also create another round of discussions with all of the municipalities that are part of Midco Solid Waste, because that's a major change to how we would handle our business. So it has nothing to do with how we handle our solid waste and what they are charging or what they might charge.
And that information was in the packet that she handed out like six meetings ago. I have it all in my car, but I didn't bring it in.
I'm also happy to have that conversation offline, Owen, if you'd like.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anything else on solid waste? No. Do you wish to speak neither for nor against or a comment on hers?
I'm commenting on the wording of the article itself.
Okay, well, then I will, I will take that as to be neither for nor against.
Well, I'm the attorney for the Midco Solid Waste Corporation. I sent around a proposed article for you to use. And right now, today, I just got, been discussing the contract with EcoMaine's lawyer, and it looks like we're going to be able to get out of the contract in every five, 10, 15, and 20-year periods. So that's something that's favorable because there was some discussion about that at your dis, at your dis, so they, looks like they're going to allow us to do that. The problem I have here is that, so we need to change the article I drafted, I think, if, if it goes through well, but the one you have now, you don't say where you're going. You need to have an article where you're approving going to EcoMaine. That's important to approve.
But I, I want to interrupt you because I'm, I'm one of the directors of Midco Solid Waste and I haven't seen any of this communication from you.
I sent it to all of the town managers.
It was on the, it was in the packet.
It was?
Yeah, that was, it wasn't in this packet. Yeah, it was in the previous packet.
If you, if you, if I get this approval, we probably can reword it so to, to let people know we have the five, 10, and 15-year outs. So my point is, the present one you have now, I just think you need to reword it and I, and send proposed, I'll send you a proposed rewording from the one I already sent you because we now have a more favorable contract that allows-
Well, we're, we're going to be voting on this, this, where did you find that?
It was in this packet.
Yeah, it was in the packet we got with all of the select boards.
Oh, okay.
Should have brought all that.
It says, shall-
Working off of what we have.
I know, but we were given that, we were given that last, the last meeting we had with all the select boards. Yeah.
But this wasn't what was voted on by, at that meeting?
It was just given as a sample article.
Right.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna-
All right, well, you can, I'm just, I'm just saying, the present article that you have there doesn't say where you're going. And then that's a problem legally when you vote on that. You have to, you have to do something about that.
From your perspective, does the fact that it says that we accept the recommendation of Midco Solid Waste imply, and give all that that implies in terms of both that the Board of Midco Solid Waste decided on EcoMaine and also that there's these anniversary five, 10, 15, and 20 for mutual exclusion?
No. I, I think the voter has to be informed of what they're voting on.
Well, I, I very much, I very much want to have the voter informed on it, but I don't think that, that adding two lines to this necessarily does that.
The one that I sent you was appropriate until I found out that the contract was going to be changed a little bit. The one I gave you before was very appropriate, but I think today you can, you can, you can vote on the concept of going to EcoMaine and you can agree on the wording of the article very soon. I, I just think that the one I sent you was much more appropriate than the one you have in front of you now.
Well, I, I would agree with, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this so that everybody can hear it. Shall the voters of the town of, it was written Camden, but obviously it would be Rockport, authorize the Board of Directors of the Midco Solid Waste Corporation to enter into a 20-year contract for the disposal of municipal solid waste for the fixed price of $70.50 per ton plus annual increases in the Consumer Price Index and on such other terms and conditions as the Board of Directors deem appropriate with EcoMaine, a nonprofit corporation owned solely by 20 municipalities organized under the laws of the state of Maine and having a place of business in Portland, Maine? And a question mark on that. What you just also told us is that this may now be a five, 10, or 15-year contract as well as a 20-year contract, and I'm getting confused.
What I'm saying is that you, the contract isn't allowing you to get out at five, 10, 15, or 20, 20-year periods.
Remember, we had that whole conversation about-
Yeah, I know.
Where do we get outs? So they gave us five-year increment outs if we so choose.
But that language doesn't destroy that because that language says, it basics, 20-year contract, and it says such other terms and conditions as the Board approves. So it's enough, it's much better than the article you have in front of you now, the other article, and it does allow for changes. But I, I, I think if I would have put in there the outs, it makes it more appealable to voters.
Okay.
I mean, there's a certain amount of information with each one of these that we have to get out information. We can't have everything in a warrant article. That's not to say that what's in there, I, I do think that that is better than what we have in front of us, but you can't give them everything in the three lines that we have on about it.
I would point out that the articles that we have in front of us for the public hearing purposes are draft articles. And when we get later in the meeting, we place the articles, we could make those changes based on what we've heard in the public hearing.
You are right.
Okay.
We could adopt a, provided it is within the scope of what we are talking now, we can adopt different wording.
Mr. Chair, I presume we're at the very first article of, of many.
And we're at the public hearing, not in a part of our discussion on whether or not to place this on the article and how to word it. Okay, that comes later.
And so you're, you're going to run through all of these?
Yep.
And then we're going to go back and we're going to then have our board discussion?
Yep.
And then we're going to vote, two votes on each one?
Yep.
But that'll be an hour and a half from now.
We're lucky.
I, I just, I wanted to-
Let me put it this way. This is the first time in my experience that we have had an elongated discussion over a warrant article, and it's very good.
That's right.
Because, you know, I did ask whether or not non-residents can speak. I asked this of MMA, and they pointed it out that this is a public hearing. It's open to all public, unlike the town meeting, which is only there for residents of the town. But anyone may speak on an article and they don't necessarily have to stay on topic. You know, they can go off, and frequently in some of these public hearings have gone off topic, but it's a public hearing where we hear what the public wants to say before we then get into our discussions.
Okay.
So with that, so.
So it's a secret article, is it?
We, we have it here and that will come up during our discussion as to how the actual article will be worded based on comment and input from the public. So, any, anyone else wish to speak neither for nor against Article III?
Is it possible to make a really brief clarification after Lissa's comments?
Again, this is public comment.
Wow.
Briefly, briefly, Allison.
I, yes.
Thank you.
Just a, you know, small clarification. I, I know that EcoMaine's education programs are available to us no matter what we choose to do with our recycling, that we can, they're, they'll give the education programs to us. What I'm questioning is the, if we decide to stay with our current recycling system, whether those programs are of great value. Their great track record is with teaching, the single-sort program. So I'm questioning, and, you know, Lissa says that she would still be willing to work with us to, to try and teach us how to do the, you know, the seven-bin, eight-bin method. But I'm just questioning whether they have a proven system for teaching people, you should have seven bins in your house, or you should just put it all in one bin and then go to the transfer station and sort it out there. I'm sure we all come up with different ways of doing that. I'd love to know some best practices, but that's my only thing is that, questioning that.
Thank you, thank you. We have Mr. Rosenbaum, who has not spoken yet. I, I hope this is still under neither for nor against.
Neither for nor against. This is a question of, when you read the article out, like most voters, I heard a number, 70 something or other, and I make the instant assumption that that is the price that I'm paying plus cost of living for the next 20 years. The next sentence was, plus whatever else we decide to do. And I think it's, it may be disingenuous to have a dollar figure, which is what most voters are going to grab on, rather than phrase it as some, not a dollar figure, but that this is a more advantageous or less advantageous plan that we have, that what we have currently.
Okay, thank you. I, I would say that is what was contract, or quoted as part of the contract.
But what I heard was.
Yeah.
We have the hauling piece, too.
Well, the contract that we have, or been presented, calls for the initial rate effective April 1, 2018, of $70.50, and that that rate would hold for a full year, and it would then be adjusted every March 31st, April 1 of each consecutive year based on what the Consumer Price Index had changed for that 12-month period.
Yes, that's what, that's what's happening.
Yeah.
Some of the contracts.
I was right.
But Jen, I think she was talking about the recycling, not the solid waste.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I still say something really quick? Okay. So yes, that was completely the recycling discussion. The $70.50 holds, actually, I think, Paulie, hopefully you can back me up on this, that we actually would hold the $70.50 until June 30 of 2019, I believe, is what's listed in the contract, and then it would, it's a, it's lined up with the fiscal year, so you would have a year and a couple of months to have the 70-50. And the one other thing I did want to speak to, I think Allison's concern is valid, and I'm glad she brought it up because it gives me an opportunity to say that the way EcoMaine teaches is malleable, and we look at each community that we work with, and we serve it in the way that's going to serve it best. Yes, there, there are some differences between your source-separated recycling system and the single sort, where we can say just throw it all in one bin, but with each community that we do a rollout for, we spend a lot of time in the community learning about the various concerns and learning their systems before we just kind of jump in. And so I would want to state that, you know, I would look to Allison, I would look heavily to Jim, so that we could teach to your.
And again, we are only talking solid waste.
Right, but what I wanted to mention is.
The discussion about recyclables is a much more protracted discussion because it involves a complete rework of the facility.
Certainly understood, but what our goal would be is not to come in and teach people how to throw everything away. The, the point to the education programs when we're talking about a solid waste contract
And we understand that.
is to educate people about how much material you can pull out before it even comes to us.
We understand that, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak neither for nor against on Article Three? Hearing none, we will now move to Article Four, to see if the town will vote that any reconstruction, expansion, improvement, renovation, or replacement of the Rockport Public Library be limited to its current location at One Lime Rock Street. This is a citizen's petition brought to us with the required number of signatures of registered voters in the town. It was presented to us several months ago, and it will be appearing now because the state law says shall. With that said, does anyone wish to speak in favor of Article Four? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to Article Four? Does anyone wish to speak neither for nor against Article Four? Hearing none, we will move to Article Five. Shall the town vote to approve the purchase of the property at 647 Rockland Street for the purchase price not to exceed $99,000 for the purpose of facilitating the possible expansion of the West Rockport Fire Station and to appropriate said funding from the unassigned fund balance? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this article? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this article? Does anyone wish to speak neither for nor against this article? We will now move to Article Six. Shall an ordinance entitled, quote, "Ordinance Amending the Town of Rockport Flood Plane Management Ordinance," end of quote, "adoption of which is mandatory for continued participation in FEMA National Flood Insurance Program be enacted?" Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this article? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this article? Does anyone wish to speak neither for nor against this article? Hearing none, we will move to Article Seven. Shall an ordinance entitled, quote, "Ordinance Amending the Town of Rockport Sewer Ordinance to Delete the Fee Schedule So That It Will Appear in the Related Sewer Regulations Instead, Clarifying the Roles and Responsibilities of the Commissioner's Authorized Representative, and Making Other Corrections and Clarifications Throughout," end of quotation, be enacted? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of Article Seven? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to Article Seven? Does anyone wish to speak neither for nor against Article Seven? Hearing none, we will move to Article Eight. Shall an ordinance entitled, quote, "Ordinance Amending the Town of Rockport Land Use Ordinance Section 600-Administration be adopted and incorporated by reference the Maine Uniform Building Code effective July 1, 2016, which would increase life safety requirements and construction standards but make no changes," say that again, "but make no change in the legal actions, enforcement powers, or penalties for violations," end of quotation, "be enacted?" Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this article? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this article? Does anyone wish to speak neither for nor against this article? Hearing none, I will move to Article Nine. Shall an ordinance entitled, quote, "Ordinance Amending the Town of Rockport Land Use Ordinance Section 805 dot 3 dash Private Ways be, to allow the code enforcement officer to issue a permit for some private ways that currently require planning board approval, to clarify what materials are required to support an application and to impose a requirement for notice to abutters for such applications," end of quotation.
For some, for some applications.
Okay. Requirement for notice to abutters for some applications, end of quote, be enacted? Question. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this article? Does anyone wish to speak neither for, and speak in opposition to this article? Not trying to rush this. Does anyone wish to speak neither for nor against this article? Hearing none, we will move to Article Ten. Shall an ordinance entitled, quote, "Ordinance Amending the Town of Rockport Land Use Ordinance Section 1400 dash Shoreland Zoning, comma, Section 917 dash Land Use Table, Section 918 dash Dimensional Table, and Section 913 dash Downtown, which would clarify the permitted uses and standards for development in a portion of, of the Section 913 Downtown Zoning District," end of quotation, "be enacted?" Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this, of this article? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this article? Does anyone wish to speak neither for nor against this article? Hearing none, I will close this portion of the public hearing and move to the next section of the public hearing, which involves a community development block grant application for Avena Botanicals. This is going to be subject of a special town meeting, and I'm looking for, oh, here, which will be on May 9, 2016. The article as written reads, "Shall the Town of Rockport vote to approve a community development block grant application up to a maximum of $100,000 on behalf of Avena Botanicals and to submit same to the Department of Economic and Community Development, and if said program is approved, to authorize the municipal officers to accept said grant funds, to make such assurances, assume such responsibilities, and exercise such authority as are necessary and reasonable to implement such programs. Furthermore, the Town of Rockport is cognizant of the requirement that it, that should the intended national objective of the CDBG program not be met, all CDBG, CDBG funds must be repaid to the State of Maine CDBG program." And I would state that CDBG stands for Community Development Block Grant. That is the statement. Now, this is for a special town meeting, which will be held at 6:30 PM on May 9, to take the final vote on this. That said, I will open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this article? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this article? Does anyone wish to speak neither for nor against this article? Hearing none, I will close this portion of the public hearing. We now are complete with our public hearing. We now move to new business, where we will take up all of this. Our first item is to vote to set the date and time for the special town meeting for Avena Botanicals as Monday, May 9, 2016, at 6:30 PM at the Rockport Opera House.
I move to set the date and time for the special town meeting for Avena Botanicals as Monday, May 9, 2016, at 6:30 PM, Rockport Opera House.
Second.
It's moved in second. Do we have any discussion on this?
What's Article One for that special?
That's to elect a moderator. The first article is always to elect a moderator.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, it took me about six years to figure that one out, too.
Why are we never starting in Article One?
Yay.
Yes, so, with that, any further discussion? All in favor of this motion? That is unanimous. Our second item is to vote to sign the Monday, May 9, special town meeting warrant.
I move to sign the Monday, May 9, 2016, special town meeting warrant.
Second.
It's moved in second. Do we have any discussion? It's in our packet tonight that we have to sign. Before you leave, make sure you have signed everything, because we have a lot of things to sign.
Okay.
Hearing no further discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous. The next one. Recommendation vote, vote by board, what? I got to read this again. Recommendation vote by the board on ordinance articles three through 10 of the June 2016 Annual Town Meeting warrant.
Now we start over again.
Now we start over again, and I know I have it in here somewhere. Here we go. What we are doing, citation vote, excuse me a moment. Okay, we will take two votes. The first vote will be to place it on the warrant. The second vote will be to recommend, or what we wish, and that recommendation can be for, against, or abstain. Abstain must be accompanied by a valid reason as to the reason for the abstention. Just to abstain means you're vote, effectively voting in favor.
You can't be a chicken.
Yeah, you can't be a chicken.
I was only going to say, can you define valid reason?
It's in the charter.
No, is it really?
Yes, it is.
Money, it comes down to money.
Facuniary interest, yeah.
Yeah. So, with that.
Want to use this?
That's what I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask before I read the article. Do we want, which version of the article do we want to try to work with? I would suggest that if we just read the article as we read for the public hearing, that we're going to ask to have it withdrawn and amended. So, just looking for note, for nods of the head, would you prefer me to read the suggested warrant? No.
There's a nod over there, the shake here.
Wait, okay.
This is how to take a vote without taking a vote.
No, okay. Jeff, do you want me to read the regular one? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, I.
Okay.
We, we do motions like this all the time. We, you know, we just did this with the, with the town manager. We author, you know, we directed him to do something, so.
All right. The article, and I will read it. If somebody wishes to make a motion and second, then fine, and we can go from there. The article that is being proposed, "Shall the Town Accept the Recommendation of the Midco Solid Waste Corporation, MCSWC, for Handling the Disposition of Municipal Solid Waste After the Termination of the Contract with Penobscot Energy Recovery Corporation, i.e. Park, on March 31, 2018?"
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. We now have discussion. Who wishes to start our discussion?
Oh, I'm not shy. I liked the other one. I, I definitely think that having a little more information in there about potentially the duration of the contract and who it would be with, I think is not too much of a stretch to add in there. And I, and I understand you can reference the recommendation, but that requires that the citizens start doing their own research project in the ballot booth, and I just, providing that little bit of information, I would think is appropriate.
And on the other side of events. So, with all due respect to Attorney Paul Givens, I think that that's more editorial, and I think that it's compared to what? It's compared to nothing, in, in the sense, so to put those numbers out there, this says, did the, the director, did the directors of Midco Solid Waste do the right thing? That says, this is what they did, what do you think about it? But it, it doesn't really reference, it's, it's really not that much more useful information, and what I would like, as we'll, as you'll see in the next 12 minutes, is I want a big, depends if we agree with that. I would like a very big discussion about this, because personally, I think the board did the wrong thing. So I'm hoping that those people that choose to become part of the discussion or listen to the discussion will know what's behind this phraseology, and will say, yeah, I think, given what they, you know, that Midco Solid Waste Board did the right thing, or they didn't do the right thing. But that doesn't really help too much, and what it's doing, much as Allison said, is taking a very, very complex situation and trying to explain salient parts of it, whereas this just says, hey, it's out there, is it good or not?
I, I will, I will take, you know, authority, or, or authorship. I, I wrote this down because we had to have something to put it out, you know, before the Midco Solid Waste actually took their vote, and that, and so we, I just haven't had, I didn't, didn't even try to change it for this. The purpose being, of course, is do we want to follow along with the other three communities? And, you know, I don't know if Camden has actually voted. I know that when they were here, they were all in favor of going along with EcoMaine. Lincolnville, ditto. Hope had a divided board, but they met last week, and they voted.
One to four, four to one.
Four to one, to support the Midco Solid Waste recommendation to send the material, the municipal solid waste, and only the municipal solid waste, to EcoMaine. They, at the time, asked, we would prefer to see what it would be for a one, or five, 10, and 15-year contracts, as opposed to just a standard total lock-in at 20 years. And we now are hearing that that is being a, a part of, making part of the contract. Now, I haven't seen the contract, so.
So since you're speaking as the author, the question.
Of this.
Of this, I, I get, I get that, of those words that are on there. What is the wording? Maybe Paul can or cannot answer this, but the, Lincolnville and Hope have voted on something. Did they use your wording?
I said the standard language to all the towns.
And what was the effect?
And I, the selectmen voted, I understand, and Hope to go along with it. I don't know.
Well, they went along with something. The question is, what did they use for their paragraph?
I, I don't know if they vote on the language.
I, I don't think that they had that, that warrant article, because they asked that they, that there be a five, 10, and 15, and 20-year.
They did have that.
Yeah. Because. Yeah, because this doesn't say that. EcoMaine did.
I don't believe the article you had in front of you is legal. You have to tell them what they're voting for. You can't have them guess what the recommendation is. So, you can put an explanation in the bottom.
Right.
You gotta do something to tell them what they're voting for.
How is this wording different from what the school board is forced to do, which is they reference a vote that took place three days before the, the secret ballot?
And they write that and put it on the ballot before they have that vote.
I just would tell you that, I don't know what the, what the school does. I don't, I haven't paid attention to that. I just think it's, it's a vote, you wanna inform the voter what they're voting on.
I get that. I really want to inform the voter.
So, so you can, you can keep it the way it is and have an explanation. You're voting for an EcoMaine contract. You should do something so they know what they're voting on. That's my recommendation. Because basically, what I try to do in a warrant article is to give the essential information about the contract. The reason, the only reason I mention, the things I mentioned in there was to make it perfectly legal. It's longer than I would have wanted to be, but I'd probably make it perfectly legal. I don't, I think that you need to have the voters know what the recommendation is. Because if they walk in that booth and they don't know what the recommendation is, then they, they don't know what they're voting on, in my opinion.
Building on, oh, if I, if I may.
Okay, you, you'll too.
Oh, absolutely.
Building on what you were saying, I do agree that, that your tipping fee and kind of the CPI stuff and where exactly EcoMaine is located, maybe not pertinent information, but at least the duration of contract and with who, I think, is a useful bit of information. Who are we going to contract with and for how long? Now, if they want to get the additional information about the, the finer points and the details of it, that may take some research, but at a minimum, we could say basically what the recommendation was, which is, it's with EcoMaine and it's for 20 years. That would be my.
With, with five, 10, 15. Do you want to put that in or not? It was, it was hard fought by the other communities. It seems, if you're gonna change it, it seems salient to put that in.
Hadn't given enough thought.
I haven't looked at the contract. I just got it a few minutes ago. So, I think it's in there, but I haven't looked at it. So, if you put it as an explanation, that's probably better.
So, from a legal standpoint, if it's not in there and we vote on it being in there, somebody's in a heap of trouble, more than this does.
Not as pertinent as the overall, because, you know, that's the end of contract. Those little outs that we were given, that's great information, just like the tipping fee is. But I think to synthesize it down to who we had been going to, Midco Solid Waste, EcoMaine, for 20 years, I would be in favor of that.
You can get out of a contract in five years. It's a five-year contract.
It's a 20-year contract with abilities to get.
It's by mutual.
Five-year contract renewable, four times.
Do we have to renew it, or does it just roll over?
That's not how it, that's not how it says. It's a 20-year contract with five-year anniversary by mutual agreement. So, if EcoMaine wants us to stay in. It's mutual. It's not unilateral.
Camden is sending this to open town meeting for exactly this reason.
They're doing it their second day?
It's mutual?
Wait, 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 one thing at a time.
Has to be, both parties have to agree.
That's, that's not correct.
That's not true?
That takes the whole point.
So, it's unilateral?
I can speak to it because the mic can light.
Yeah, we, each of the four towns that are part of Midco Solid Waste will be individually contracting.
I don't think that's correct.
That's not, no.
Well, if we, if we as Rock, as Camden, or, if Camden, unlike the rest of us, votes to go a separate way, they would have to handle their own municipal solid waste separate from what happens at the transfer station. Likewise, if we, and when I say we, the voters of the town say they don't want to sign on with EcoMaine, then we, the town of Rockport, have to find a way of disposing of our municipal solid waste, because that is required by state law. We, the town has to provide a means of disposal of the municipal solid waste. That's what we think of as the yellow bag.
So, let me ask you this. If, I gotta look at both ends of the spectrum. If a, if half plus one of each of the, of the towns, say, like South Thomaston did, our board made the wrong decision, we do not vote to accept that. That clearly leaves Midco Solid Waste the avenue of saying, oh, now we gotta scramble real quick. We gotta look at our options once again. We gotta make a new decision. If the citizens of Rockport are the only ones who, in, with a plurality, say, we think the board made the wrong choice, what, what does that mean?
All right, Paul, I'll, I'll defer to you on this one before I chime in.
This is a question of law. It's not a question of opinion. It's a question of law. And it isn't, it isn't, the reason, first of all, you have to understand, it's, it's common sense to understand that the trash that goes in our, the MSW that goes to our facility is not segregated. So, we don't know what's coming from Rockport, what's coming from Camden. So, we have to have a contract from, from the Municipal Solid Waste Corporation with EcoMaine. That's why we have to do it, because it's all co-mingled and it can't be separated. So, under our inter-local agreement, all the municipalities have to agree to contract for more than three years, all of them. And if one of them doesn't agree, there's no contract.
Right.
There's no contract for anybody.
Right. That gives the board of Midco Solid Waste a chance to do something else. Either bring it right back to the voters and say, no, you were wrong, we were right, or look at their other options.
There's all kinds of other options, but I don't wanna go there right now. But that's why it has to be, as you said, it has to be one contract for everybody to go to, to go someplace. And the reason I represented municipalities, because, believe it or not, our inter-local agreement only allows us to contract for three years with municipalities. It doesn't allow us to go contract with a third party. But anyway.
Where, where do we, where are we gonna change that? In what document?
No, this, this is a municipality. EcoMaine is municipally owned. It's okay. So, EcoMaine is a municipally-owned transfer station. It's okay. So, it's all right. So, the bottom line is, is that you all have to, we all have to agree, or we don't have any contract with EcoMaine.
Okay. So, one holdout town could bust the contract and then the, the.
You'd have to do something.
The fine folks that have worked very hard on Midco Solid Waste Board would have to do something.
Right, because we have a contract that's coming up in 2018. We have to do something. That, that goes on to what he would say, is, I think the response would probably be, like, it might be, well, if all, you know, one town doesn't wanna do this, everybody else does. We're gonna have to rearrange our inter-local agreement, and you may got to go someplace else, and we'll all vote to, you know, do something different, so.
So, one more question. Stay up there, because I want legal rather than opinion, is if indeed Camden has put this off from their secret vote to their town meeting.
See, I don't know that.
It's a day after. That's what John French.
Right, right, right. But, but it changes the dynamic entirely, because then it's a, then it's a conversation.
Hey, just a day after.
Or an argument.
We have the secret ballot on 14th, and then the town, open town meeting on the 15th.
So, when are they voting on it? On the?
15th. And, I mean, John French told me that he believed that, he was very surprised when I told him that you said it was going to secret ballot in Rockport. This was like two weeks ago, though, so.
Okay, this is the first I've heard of it. Paul, I've, I've gotta turn to you and ask you. It's my understanding that the inter-local agreement and the agreement from the towns to send their waste through the municipal, well, the contract with the Municipal Review Corporation, MRC, was voted on in secret ballot by each of the towns back in 1997, wherever it was.
Actually, what happened is, there was one contract, and all municipalities together signed that one contract.
But it required a vote of each of the municipalities to agree to sign the contract. And the point I'm getting at, wasn't that vote done by secret ballot?
I think it was done by secret ballot.
In which case, legal opinion, I'm asking, doesn't that mean any vote to change it require a vote by secret ballot?
No, because you're not changing the contract with Perk. Expires. The contract with Perk is expiring. You're not changing that contract. So, you're allowed to vote by, by secret ballot or a public, or a town meeting warrant. You can do either way you want to. I think the reason the towns were worried about a secret ballot vote is it requires public hearings so far in advance of the town meeting.
Hence the reason we're holding it.
I know, I know. So, they were, and they were, they wanted to make sure that, they were hoping that we could get a, a contract finished, and so that the town would know exactly what that contract was gonna say, just before the town meeting. But you're not required to go by secret ballot, or you can go by secret ballot. It's up to you. I sent a, I sent a memo with my, with my warrant articles to all the towns, showing them the notice requirements for a vote by secret ballot as opposed to a vote at the town meeting. It's up to you how you wanna vote on that. That's my question was at first. I guess those first 10 articles are all secret ballot articles.
Yes, yes.
How does the inter-local agreement play into this Perk contract? Did we vote to go to the inter-local, and what, what's binding there?
Oh, boy.
Can of worms.
I can do something really, I can summarize that really quick. Really quick. Here's the problem. Towns are only to legally allowed to operate within their borders. You can't go outside your borders. So, in this solid waste corporation, we went outside our borders and grabbed three towns. And that requires an inter-local agreement. If all three towns get together and do something, it requires inter-local agreement by law.
But this inter-local agreement also includes the EPA.
Payment for our perpetual.
All those perpetual payments.
No, no. The inter-local agreement for the handling of municipal solid waste and the recyclables is separate from the requirement to handle the, the hole, the hole over there, the landfill.
But that's part of Midco Solid Waste.
It is. It's all together.
Handle that, and we are a part of that.
The agreement itself, it just, it just says how, it says, for example, you're gonna vote, you're gonna determine the cost by population and by valuation and all that stuff. So, it's, it's just an outline of how you manage yourself. After that, you have all these problems with the environment and the DEP, and that's all part of it.
Right, but if we could, if we left the inter-local agreement, we would still have to pay for those things, because we were a part of that entire creature.
Responsibilities.
Right, we have taken on that responsibility for all of time, literally.
It would be a nightmare.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's your point. It would be a nightmare, yeah.
Actually, the way you just said it, that if we drop out of the inter-local, the other three towns have to take some vote to send theirs to a place outside of their town, because ours is still going to a place within our town, but.
No, no, that, that contradicts what Paul said. Paul said, any one community voting this down, you don't have a contract, you start all over again.
Inter-local agreement, just so I hope you wanna go there, inter-local agreement provides a section about remedies if you, if you don't agree. And it's more complicated than that. But, but anyway, hopefully you won't go there. The question is, if you wanna bring this for the voters, you have two choices. You can be by secret ballot, or it can be at open town meeting. And you need to be able to tell the voters, especially secret ballot, what they're voting on. If they're in the booth, they just can't, you can say, I wanna make it simple, say, we want a, a contract with EcoMaine for up to 20 years, period. Or you can tell them what the tipping fee is, so they'll have some idea what they're paying. But you have to tell them what they're doing, in my opinion.
We do have the motion which has been seconded. Where do we wanna go from here?
Mr. Chairman, I, I think, in deference to my colleague to my, to my right here, who talked about editorializing, I don't believe that stating what the recommendation of Midco Solid Waste Corporation was in the article is editorializing. I believe it's giving information to the voters. And so, I would advocate for something at least closer to what Mr. Gibbons has proposed, letting people know that they are voting for EcoMaine. Otherwise, I mean, yes, the recommendation is there, but there are gonna be a significant portion of the electorate who are gonna go into the ballot and see this for the, and not understand what they're voting for, if we don't change the wording from what was, what the motion states.
Okay.
Your colleague on the right yields to your, yields to your common sense. I won't say, which is, I won't say anything more about that.
Stop confusing me, please.
I'm trying to be a nice guy.
So, what I'm, what I hope I'm hearing, though, heaven knows, is that if we were to put EcoMaine of Portland, Maine into here somewhere, that would satisfy most everybody's needs. No, not that one. This one. Not, this is the one we're dealing with. So, what I was thinking of is, say, and we're right on the beginning of this, shall the, shall the town accept the recommendation of Midco Solid Waste Corporation, MCSWC, for EcoMaine of Portland, Maine, for handling the disposition of municipal solid waste after the termination, blah, 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 blah?
With EcoMaine, it would be.
With Eco, yeah, that's.
Could you, could you put EcoMaine in after waste for handling the disposition of municipal solid waste by EcoMaine for a contract length of terminate, or 20 years after the termination of the current contract with Perk?
Here's some more, here's some more wordsmithing. How about entering into a contract with EcoMaine? Because that's what we're asking the voters to do.
But we aren't in any entered the contract. Midco Solid Waste is.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Shall the town accept the recommendation of Midco Solid Waste Corporation to enter into a contract for handling, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera?
Can, can, can we go back to the elephant? Do we want this secret ballot, or do we want this open meeting?
That was what I was gonna bring up, is.
I mean, if, if, if we think that it would be wise to have this as a discussion. I've got my sleeves rolled up.
Well, I think.
I have to be honest. I, I think that it should stay as secret ballot. I think as many people as possible should get a chance to vote on this.
That was gonna be my point, is that historically, you know, our attendance at town meeting is low. And historically, whenever we've had an item of such importance, we have put it on the secret ballot in order to gain the greatest number of voters.
Maybe that's why it's low.
Yeah.
You know, we don't, we don't do anything of real significance at the, at the second-day annual town meeting. It's pretty pro forma.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna, you know, put my tongue firmly in my cheek here and say, this might be a great way of getting more people to show up to town meetings. But, you know, you know, what we really need to do, though, is do the right thing.
Well, we're gonna have also the, the fiber optics at town meeting. That's gonna be discussed. So, it's gonna be a, for Rockport, a well-attended, lively, and.
Okay.
You know, and I, I think that one of the things we have to think about going forward is, no matter how we choose to handle this question, we need to know what it would take or what, what it means to us if we were to say no. Because that's really the cusp of where we are now, given that Midco Solid Waste has put in the time and the effort that they have to make this decision. Despite the fact that it is a split decision, it's kind of critical that we try to stay as a, as a group, try to stay together, because the, the realistic outcome of us trying to break up this inter-local agreement, I think, would shock and stun people beyond normal compare.
But, correct me if I'm wrong, but aren't you take, aren't you jumping to conclusion where the act of one of the towns to vote this down doesn't split up at Midco Solid Waste, it merely stops that contract negotiation in its, in its, in its.
Right, at the same time, there's a very limited amount of time for the fiber rights situation. And I, I would have to say, you're, you're putting yourself in a really bad situation if we say no to this. To be really honest, whether, I, obviously, fiber rights is important to you, but at this point in time, the logic of the towns turning down the recommendation of the Midco Solid Waste Corporation throws so many things out the window and makes life incredibly difficult, that I, I just, I think that this group needs to think very hard about what a no vote would mean and the path that it could take us down. And the fact that more and more people are jumping on an EcoMaine bandwagon. The reality is that if we were to wait three months, they may not have room for our waste.
That's one of my points entirely.
Because, wait, 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 wait. Time out, time out, time out.
But we have, okay.
Please.
Okay. See, you told me to open my mouth.
What we have to do is figure out what we want to recommend to our residents to vote on. Rick, you wanted to mention something here on this.
One of the things is, even for us, for the, for the town managers in the area, this is a very complicated and, and a, a very difficult and complicated question. And not to say that the vote, voters of Rockport or any community can't make those difficult and complex decisions, but are they the result of going into the voting booth and casting a ballot, or are they the result of a conversation that people have at an open meeting? And maybe they come in, they, they need to have an understanding of what the. And maybe they come in, they, they need to have an understanding of what the ramifications of their vote one way or the other are. And they, it can be explained at town meeting and they may still vote that way. I don't know how they'll vote. But once you close the curtain, you're relying on them having all of the information they need and it's a really complicated problem. I mean, it makes my head hurt with this, all this stuff, but it, it's not easy.
Yeah. And, and I understand that. And to, to me, it might be better to hold it at the open town meeting so that we can have this kind of discussion. Now, I would point out, at open town meeting or at the town meeting, the right to speak is only to the voters, registered voters of the town, without a two-thirds majority of the voters permitting an outside person to speak.
I got that.
You know, and I'm only putting it out there because that's one of the nuances of town meeting versus public hearing. We've got a lot of work to do on this and I'm, I'm not sensing that we are that close to a unanimous decision or maybe even a four to one on this, but we need to get back to how do we want to deal with this? We have the motion on what was read, which was what was presented at the public hearing and that we heard comment on. So let's, let's start this again as to first, do we absolutely not like that wording that was presented, in which case that takes us down another step.
Yep.
Okay. Cause then, if we agree this is not the way we want it, then we can start working on really what we want without keeping this as the motion. Because whoever seconded the motion can ask to withdraw it and whoever made the motion can agree to withdraw it and then we can start afresh.
I don't remember.
He seconded it. I made the most. Tracy seconded it.
Okay. But, you know, if we want to withdraw it, then I would suggest the first thing we do is decide whether we want this to go to the secret ballot or the open town meeting. Because based on that, it depends on how we want to word it.
So I have a quick question for Tracy, who was, who wants to have, like we all do, wants to have voters voting with a good grasp of the situation. So my question is, would you rather have the people that showed up at annual meeting live, let's say it triples in size, so there's, there's 125 people there, who have gained an opportunity to hear you and Bill speak, because you've been with that whole thing all the way along, and they gained the opportunity to hear crazy people like me speak, isn't, don't they come out more informed than reading a couple of letters to the editor and, and going into the booth regardless of how we write this? Isn't that a more well-informed decision on the, on the part of the voters who granted are able and willing to come to a live event?
I don't know why you're asking me this question.
Because it feels like you want it to go to the secret ballot. So I'm saying, why, why does that ensure, why does the secret ballot ensure more information?
Neither way ensures that people will be educated about what they're voting on. They just will get a chance to listen to all of us expound for an hour and a half on any given subject. So I honestly would rather it be secret ballot, but I, I, I don't have a fight about how we vote on it. My reality is, is that this community needs to say yes to this, period. And that's, that's just at the very basis of everything I have to say, is that the Midcoast Solid Waste Corporation made the best decision they could with the information they had. And that is what the group voted on and that the other three communities have voted to put it on their ballot, however they put it on their ballot as that. And it's just vital that we support this, the Midcoast Solid Waste Corporation at this point, however we do it.
I, I'd like this.
I just got an email from, I'm sorry, I got a text message from John Duke where they said that Hope is doing it on a floor vote at, at town meeting. And he believes that Camden and Lincolnville was also doing the same. I haven't heard back from Pat. I, I texted Pat also and I haven't gotten back, answered back from her yet. So.
You know, I, I'd like to make a statement on this before we go anywhere else, that I was part of all those discussions. And if you had been there the night that we actually took our vote, I spoke very strongly in favor of going with MRC and using the fiber right solution. You know, I agree completely with you. You know, this is one of those Ben Franklin things. We either hang together or we all hang individually. But, you know, we are, we are a community of four towns that share, I mean, a responsibility. Whether we are voting to individually sign a contract with EcoMaine or if we're falling, we're individually signing on or agreeing with Midcoast Solid Waste, which we are a member community of and having them sign it, we all need to go and do the same, you know, take that same route. If the other three towns are doing it at the open public meeting, and I know Hope and Lincolnville are very popular events. And, you know, and if Camden is going the same way as what we have heard, I think maybe that would be the best way. The, the issue is still going to come down is what if one or more of the towns at their public, at their town meeting say no to EcoMaine? We're, it doesn't matter whether, how we word this now. The effect is that something is going to have to be done or we effectively are breaking up our consortium, our, our community effort of the four towns. And I don't think we want to do that. You know, there's been a good history of us cooperating and, you know, yeah, we've had some disagreements at times, but we've worked them out because the, the four towns understand what the benefit is of acting as a community. So I've, I've said my piece.
Sure. So I'll tip my hat, but again, I think you're mischaracterizing.
Which, I'm sorry.
No, you, you're mischaracterizing what happens if one of the towns, one of the towns voting against it does not break up Midcoast Solid Waste.
No, I, no, I'm sorry. You misunderstood me.
Okay.
Cause I was saying that, you know, if one or more vote against this recommendation, we've got another stat, somehow else to go through.
That's exactly right.
That's what I meant to say.
Yeah, okay.
The article was written in a way that you were going to vote on EcoMaine or not vote on EcoMaine. It was not designed to say, well, when do you want to take your trash after 2018? You want to take it to Fiberite? You want to take it to Perth? You want to take it to Portland? That we knew that that would be unworkable. So after you made a decision, you know, we wanted to make sure that, because that wouldn't, that'd be too confusing. So the question was going to be, do you want to go to EcoMaine or not? Accept that recommendation or EcoMaine or not? That's the question.
Right.
Yeah.
So just want, so that's the way, why the article was worded, the way it was worded. Just to, and tell people what it's about the best we can. Do you want to go to EcoMaine, accept the recommendation or not? Either go to open town meeting or you can go to secret ballot. And I agree with you, that's, I think you're probably a good, if you go to open meeting, everyone else says it's probably a good idea.
So one argument for having it at town meeting is that if Jeff hopes that we do not accept this warrant, we would then have to have a second town meeting before June the 30th in hopes with him getting a vote and getting all four towns to change their minds or the other three towns to change their minds. But we could have another town meeting to have another vote as compared to having another secret ballot.
And, and I, I can, I agree with almost everything you said. I don't believe that we would have to have that next town meeting before June 30th.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
Well, that's what the last fiber right thing was that came out. That was the last MRC.
Changing that every day.
Well, I know, which also gives me reason to believe they, yeah.
Again, but, you know, this is, right now, we're looking at the agreement of Midcoast Solid Waste to go to EcoMaine. And that's what the decision would have to be, yes or no. Because we don't want to go out and, and put, you know, well, if you don't like this, how about that? How about that? And, and, cause that would only confuse it. It's got to be one option and yes or no.
I understand that.
Okay.
I am saying that if the answer is no, and we need to get, make a decision, we can then have another town meeting.
I would point out that a number of the school districts around here, or whatever they call them now, are RSUs, you know, they voted down things and they work it and then they come back later and vote again and then they work it again.
But budgets always happen at, at town meeting.
But they, you know, the towns have a separate town meet and then they have another town meet and another town meet.
That's what I'm saying. But we vote on our budget at town meeting too.
Yes.
So I'm saying if we put this on town meeting rather than on secret ballot, then we have another town meeting instead of having to have a secret ballot. Because when you start talking about the schools, those are town meeting events. So when they have multiple ones, they're just having another town meeting until they make a decision.
Yes.
Whereas if we make a decision by private, by secret ballot, we would potentially have to do it, do another secret ballot to get another opinion. So that leans towards.
The other three towns are doing open.
I can't help, I can't help the other three towns. I'm talking about us.
Yes.
If we vote this down at town meeting, we could have another town meeting potentially within the timeframe of the.
Have nothing to do with the budget.
Right, I know that.
Oh, okay. I, I don't know.
You were saying that the towns have multiple town meetings to pass school budgets.
I was only using that as an example when the budgets get voted down.
Right. But they get voted down at a meeting, not in a secret ballot.
Either way, it doesn't matter.
Okay. Right. And I'm, I'm.
Mr. Chairman, if we, if we have a secret ballot once and we need to make another decision, I don't think there's anything that obligates us to having a secret ballot again. Just like we can decide right now whether to have this on a secret ballot or an open town meeting. We can, we can do that for a second vote if it's required.
Yeah.
The problem, I think, is this, because almost always true, the more people vote by secret ballot, the more town meeting.
Yes.
If you have a secret ballot and then you have an open town meeting and the vote at the town meeting is less than the other vote, you might have a problem. I guess you wouldn't, because you have a new article. I think it'll be all right. Your article.
Well, if, if the first vote is a secret, a secret ballot, then all the rest of them on that art, that item would have to be the same way, I would think.
I don't think so.
But, but also.
Then you're changing the rules.
Well, we, first of all, well, it's, it's, it's a whole nother negotiation, but first of all, we would not, there's no situation where we would on, on Tuesday have a vote and then on Wednesday have something that was a reaction to that vote. Because we're not even the government body that makes that decision. So, so that response doesn't make, make sense to me at that point of pause. So we're saying, if, if we do, if, you know, if enough people at that meeting say, yeah, you're right, cosmic weave, carpet flipper and all these reasons, not a good idea. We're just forcing MRC to go back and, and do something different. That's all. And, and there's no, there's no.
But it doesn't matter if it's a secret ballot or, or open town meeting.
Well, that's correct, but I, I think if we're looking for an educated voter, I think there's more education to be had in situ, in a live situation.
And there's nothing that says that Midcoast Solid Waste Corporation will make a different decision. You think that by saying no, you're forcing them to make a different decision. That doesn't necessarily mean.
I don't think that at all.
Wait, wait, and.
That's what you just said.
No.
Okay, time out, time out, please. What we're dealing with here is what we want to place in front of the bulk, the voters of Rockport. And it doesn't matter what any of the other three towns are putting in front of their voters or how they're doing it. It's how we want to present this question to our voters. So we're only sitting here, what was the term, in loco peremptus? We're, we're sitting here acting in their behalf, bringing things to them who are the legislative body of the town. And we just have to figure out how do we bring it to them so that they can make an informed decision. And whether it is by secret ballot or by open town meeting, you know, it, it happens. You know, the school district by law has to go to secret ballot. Ordinances that change our land use have to go to secret ballot. This is a question that is, could be in either camp. Some towns put their whole budget on a secret ballot and don't hold a town meeting. We put it to town meeting, open town meeting to purge discussion.
My, and I know Heaven wanted to speak and I apologize, Heaven, I'm just trying to, maybe it would be useful. I, I would like to see it at open town meeting. And then we'll just go from there.
Can I just remind you that every town meeting we ever have, how many questions go through and no one asks any questions? So you're just assuming that saying going to a town meeting and that you're going to have more informed voter because they're going to ask questions. Well, what happens if you go to this town meeting and you say, this is the article and everybody just says, okay?
And I would, I, for argument's sake, I have been here where people have stood up and changed the allocation of money. I have seen in other towns where they go for hours and actually in, in our town, they go for hours over wording. But because they are involved, that's what happens. You know, if you go into a ballot box, you, you go into this, the booth, you're not arguing with anybody but yourself.
I, I can probably say that there's enough passion here on the board that even if no one in the audience had a single question, we would hash it out amongst ourselves and they would become informed.
I, I'd like to recognize our town clerk.
But if I'm not mistaken, even if it's an open town meeting, this question, the voters can ask for secret ballot on that particular warrant article if they so desire.
Yeah.
In fact, the moderator can, if he can't, if he can't make a decision based on a show of hands, the moderator can ask for a recorded vote.
And I believe that we have one question on our town meeting that will have to go to a ballot vote, if I, if I recall.
Fiber? What do you think it's going to do there?
I don't remember now. I'm, I'm so wrapped up in this, I'm not.
Can't get through Article 3.
Let's, let's get through Article 3.
Chairman, I have one more point. The one reason I think that towns want to go to an open town meeting is they figured they'd have the contract approved by the committee. They'd actually have the total contract right there for everyone to see. They'll file at the town office. So there wouldn't be much to say, on such terms and conditions as the board approves, it would be already wrapped up. That's one other reason why they would go. They'd have time to do that.
Okay.
I think no matter which one we choose, it's going to be an education effort, whether it's a secret ballot vote. There are going to be people who are passionate on both sides. We've heard it here tonight, who are going to get a lot of information out there. So then the voters hopefully will pay attention, at least some portion of them will pay attention and, and make an informed choice at the ballot box. Same thing on the floor of the town meeting, that we'll have people there who will be speaking to it. So I think that that sort of balances out. I do think that Paul's point about having the contract there to look is, is not unimportant. Because I know at the meeting we had last week, I was wondering, we talked about, and obviously one of it's been fixed. If we have the five, 10, 15 year opt out, that's something. We also talked about the possibility of being able to separate out our own organics, if, if that's a possibility. EcoMaine said they didn't want them, but does that leave us free to deal with another way to, to take care of those? I don't know. And we talked about possibly having that in the contract. So if the contract is.
That's been, that was word.
So if, if the contract is a, is a fluid document, then perhaps the open town meeting is a better way to go with it. Unfortunately, it disenfranchises me because I'm out of town for the day of the open town meeting this year, so I won't be able to vote, but.
Okay.
We'll, we'll send the Rockport jet over your.
We, we have a motion on the floor and it has been seconded. It is what was written as Article 3. We have not changed it. Right now, the way it is stated. Right now, the way it is stated and where it is placed, it would be on the secret ballot. If we wish to remove it from the secret ballot, we would need to vote either withdraw the second and the motion, or vote down the motion on the way it's worded and then discuss how we want to continue with that. So, um, does anyone wish to withdraw their motion?
If it helps, I will withdraw my second.
Withdraw first.
Okay, we have no motion on the thing. Let us now decide.
We're back to where we started like 45 minutes ago.
I love it.
Forty-five minutes.
Sorry.
All right, so I make a motion.
Folks at home, this is how sausage is made.
They don't care, they want their third cup of tea. Um, I make a motion that we, um, introduce and vote on the Midcoast Solid Waste Corporation decision at open town meeting. Is that clear?
It was clear to me. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion is to put this on the open town meeting warrant. In other words, remove it from the secret ballot warrant.
If that is the case, I'm actually okay with this language. As ambiguous as it is, I would be assured that we would be able to go and explain better.
We're not talking language, we're not talking language, we're just talking whether this will be on the secret ballot or at open town meeting.
And I wanna, the way I understood the motion, it was not a motion to place on the ballot. It was a motion to discuss it in terms of...
Oh, no, I said, and vote, and vote. So, I, I apologize. My wording really did say, place it on the warrant of the open town meeting. I'm, I'm pretty sure that's what came out of my mouth.
That's what I seconded.
Yep, so I'd like to clarify my...
The only reason I agree on that is we're gonna have to deal with the other, the open town meeting articles later in the meeting.
Yes, we will.
So, I'm...
So, did, did, did I have a second on that?
Yes.
Yeah, me, actually.
Oh, he said, okay.
So do you want to retract and I'll come up with better wording?
What?
There, there is a problem with the wording that I did.
Linda, would, Linda, would, would you re, would you read, read the wording? I, to me, that sounds rather clear. We, the, this article we are obviously referring to is what is now worded as Article 3.
Is to be moved to the town meeting.
Be a different article number, but it would still be an article. It would just be appearing on the secret town meeting, or the, the open town meeting ballot.
Shake it out, buddy, shake it out.
So, do we have any more discussion on this motion?
I guess... Our usual form is to place an article on the warrant. And I'm just concerned that this motion doesn't do that. I was thinking, the, by seconding the motion, I was thinking, okay, we're gonna set this aside for now and deal with it when we come, when we deal with articles, whatever number they are, and place it in that motion. That would allow us to move forward by placing articles for, through, whatever on the warrant. And then when we, when we get to the town meeting, the open town meeting articles, we could then have a motion to place this article on the warrant at that time.
I believe that the way to deal with it would be to move to place it on the table with action to be done at a subsequent local, subsequent time within this meeting.
Okay.
You know?
You want to retract and, um, I'll take your motion?
Okay, I'll retract.
As does the first.
The one night that I don't bring my Robert's Rolls.
So I, I moved to table what is presently called Article 3 for discussion later in the meeting.
Second.
Are we clear on that?
Clear as mud.
Okay, all in favor? Hey!
Later we'll have to pull it from the table, remove from the table.
Okay.
I'm sure we'll have somebody with us.
It is five minutes to nine. Shall we move through the rest, Articles 4 through 10? Or what are currently numbered is 4 through 10, which will be appearing on the secret ballot?
I gotta tell you, Article 8 may take us a little bit.
Oh.
Um, I have questions about Article 4, actually, but I think we should take a break.
Um, we have a motion to take a break. Do we have a second? We have a second on paper?
Yay!
We're gonna take a brief break.
I am, I have stuff in this in my face.
This recommendation.
Is Terry, Terry, you ready? Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting back to order. We are now going, we are still within our area of discussion on recommendation votes for the articles. Let's start it out, three through 10, which are what will appear on the secret ballot for the town. We are now at Article four. And that is to see if the town will vote that any reconstruction, expansion, improvement, renovation, or replacement of the Rockport Public Library be limited to its current location at one Lime Rock Street. This is a citizen's petition. We cannot change the wording. However, and because it has been presented to us in satisfactory form with a sufficient number of signatures, we must place it as the law says, we shall, and our town charter says, we shall. It will go on to, it shall go on to the June warrant. So, it's a perfunctory vote on our part to place it on the warrant. Then we make our recommendation. I have checked both with Town Council and MMA, and both of them agree that this is a warrant, and the town select board, in our case, makes the recom, can make a recommendation if we choose. Apparently, this is one of those where if we don't wanna, we don't have to. But normally, in such a situation, it is up to us to recommend or not recommend. So.
I move to place Article four on the warrant as read.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion about placing this on the warrant? Yes.
Well, not about placing it on the warrant, but I do have two questions. The first one being, do we make any sort of reference to the fact that it's a citizen position? Citizens petition, that's number one.
Yeah.
And number two, I have been told all along, this is a binding referendum as compared to other things, which are not. And neither one of those pieces of information is reflected around this article. I understand we can't change what the article actually says. But should it have those two pieces of information as a introduc, introduction to this? Because all of the rest of the things here, we're, we're putting on the ballot because we think it moves the question of what we're doing in this town forward. This one was a citizen's petition, it's a different creature. And it's supposed to be binding as compared to being whatever everything else is. So, are we going, how are we going to attend to that so that people know what this is? Because it did come from someplace else.
I think you could add citizens petition fairly easily. I think as far as it's by name and the way it's worded, you know, to see if the town will vote. I don't know what's, what could possibly be non-binding about that.
I've never seen it specified that it's a citizen's petition.
Yeah, the last citizen's petition we had was regarding the ball fields at RES, and there was no specific wording placed on that. There was a recommendation from the select board.
Wasn't there a bit about it being a non-binding? Because I remember people going up one side of me and down the other, again with the non-binding. Or maybe that was just anecdotal word of mouth. But I remember people bringing up that it was a non-binding vote, it was done purposefully.
Which one?
For the RES site. And they did it purposefully in case they came across something later on, they wanted to be able to retract it.
Right.
Well, any, any resolution such as this can be reversed by another petition.
Or by another town.
Or by another town meeting vote. You know, it's, you know, and it's not happening here, but let's say some other group comes along in July and brings in a petition with a sufficient number of signatures, properly worded, that says, it will, the future location of the library will be at 647 Rockland Street in West Rockport. That would override this if it passed.
I know, but barring that, it's binding.
But barring that, this is binding, and it has been validated that the way this is worded, this is a binding resolution.
Chairman, I dug up the, the email from Amy Chow. Yes, I believe the select board can indicate whether they recommend passage of a particular warrant article. It is not uncommon to see statement like recommended by the select board or recommended by the budget committee. You could also indicate on that it's a petition warrant article submitted by petition without the accompanying recommended by the budget committee. So if the select board has an alternative article they would, they're in support of, they can indicate their support of that article. But she's, she said it can be.
Innuated as such.
Right. It can be, you can get, you can, you can put a recommended or not recommended, or put a vote, or you can just simply say it's submitted by petition.
Can you do both?
Can you do an end?
Oh, I think you can do, probably do both if you want.
Yeah, what we could do is, just instead of start with to see if, we start a citizen's, a binding citizens petition. Quote, to see if.
I, I would leave the word binding out.
Yeah.
Okay, a citizens petition.
The, the following is a citizens petition, colon, to see.
She's, she's saying it should be at the, at the end of the article.
At the end, okay.
Okay.
Submitted by citizen petition.
This article is submitted as a citizen petition.
Sort of a parenthetical comment at the end.
Sure.
Okay. The motion is to place on the warrant the wording that I wrote, read earlier. Does anyone wish to make a motion to amend to include a parenthetical statement? This article was submitted by citizens petition.
So moved.
Second.
I'm writing it down. Do we have discussion on this? This is an amendment. This is an amendment. No discussion on the amendment, it's been.
It's, as long as it's, the parenthetical statement is not construed as changing the wording of the article, which we can't do.
No, you can't.
No, so we're okay with that.
That's, it's, it's basically, it's, it's the same as you would put in the select board votes or the budget committee recommends with their votes, it's the same thing.
Okay. So I'm fine with that.
With that, this is, the vote on the amendment, all in favor? That said, now we have the petition as the whole, which was what was originally read, plus the amendment. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Putting it on the ballot.
Putting it on the ballot. This is just putting it on the ballot.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, it is on the battle, ballot. This will effectively become Article three.
Yeah, don't even do that.
Yeah, I was curious how that was gonna shake out.
Yeah, no, it's too late at night to be trying to confuse.
Now, we need to, do we wish to make a recommendation vote on this?
Yes.
Yes.
Could I have a motion?
I move that we, that we recommend, that we have a vote on recommendation of this article.
Second.
Okay, I'll, I'll accept that, it's moved and seconded. And I'm gonna interpret the way you worded it as saying recommend in the positive.
No, all, no.
No, take a recommendation.
Just to make a recommendation, this is not the recommendation itself.
Okay, okay.
Or it's optional.
Now, I understand it. All right, do we have discussion on making a recommendation? Hearing none.
When I put my hand up, what am I?
You're just voting to say, yes, we're gonna recommend.
We're gonna.
Yes, we are going to vote on a recommendation.
This is a slow, steady process. All right.
You call it steady.
Okay. All in favor of take, of making a vote to recommend?
See.
Okay, okay. Now that we are going to make a recommendation, does anyone wish to make a rec? And I would prefer it to be in the positive, because it's easier to understand. You know, I move that we recommend adoption of this order, something in that wording, okay?
So moved.
What he said, second. But this same style is gonna carry for all of them.
It's much, much clearer if the motion to recommend is made in the positive, even if you're gonna vote against it, okay? Now, what I'm going to do, because I sense that this is not gonna be a yes, all in favor of, or maybe not even a no, all in favor of. I'm just gonna call for the vote, unless we have discussion before we vote, okay?
You want explanation?
Okay.
I think we should have a little discussion about this, just so that the people know. I mean, for me, I will vote not to recommend this article mainly because I think it limits our possibilities. We've just gone to the point where we've engaged an architect and looking at that whole area out there. I don't have any objection to building a new library at one Lime Rock Street, but I don't want to close off other possibilities that may come up through the design process as we go forward.
I have nothing better to say than what he just said, completely agreed.
And to clarify, it's my understanding that one Lime Rock Street knocks out, putting anything on the other side of the street, therefore, which is Memorial Park, therefore, I'd say it unnecessarily restricts the, the architects.
Okay.
I have nothing to say.
And it's all been said very well. Then I will call, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do it the way we usually do. All in favor of the motion to recommend, please raise your hand.
Wow.
No one. Then, since we are still, you, apparently unanimous, all who wish to vote against or in, in effectively not recommending, all against this motion, that is unanimous. The vote is zero in favor, five against.
We got one done.
And zero abstention, not recommend. We got something. Let's move on to what? In our notes here is Article five. Shall the town vote to approve the purchase of the property at 647 Rockland Street for the purchase price not to exceed $99,000 for the purpose of facilitating the possible expansion of the West Rockport Fire Station and to appropriate said funding from the unassigned fund balance?
Move to place on warrant.
Second.
Moved and seconded place on warrant. Do we have any discussion on whether or not to place this on the warrant? Hearing none, all in favor of placing this on the warrant. This has been placed on the warrant. I would now entertain a motion to recommend the adoption of this warrant article.
Some of.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion on the recommendation to approve?
I think that we are very fortunate to have members of the community that are willing to offer us a reduced price on a piece of property that I think is quite critical to the long-term safety in West Rockport.
And public safety is big for me, not only West Rockport, but the whole town, because there are gonna be times when the apparatus from there will come to other parts of the town as well.
That apparatus actually rolls every call.
Yeah, other towns as well.
With that, no further comment. All in favor of recommending, that is unanimous. Five for, seeing five is the total number, is zero against, and zero abstention to recommend.
Uh, yeah, you wanna take.
Go right ahead, why don't you take the next one?
I move to place Article six on the warrant, reading, shall an ordinance entitled, ordinance amending the town of Rockport floodplain management ordinance, adoption of which is mandatory for continued participation in FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program, be enacted?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. I would point out that the planning board has already voted for in favor, zero against, and zero abstention to recommend the adoption of this article. Do we have any further comment? Hearing none, this is being placed on, this is the vote to place it on the warrant. All in favor of placing on the warrant, that is unanimous. We now need a rec, a motion to recommend.
Some of.
Second.
Moved and seconded to recommend. Do we have any further discussion on whether or not to recommend to the voters? Hearing none, all in favor of a recommendation in favor, that is unanimous. Who wants to take the next one?
I'll take it.
Go.
Article seven, shall an ordinance entitled, quote, ordinance amending the town of Rockport sewer ordinance to delete the fee schedule so that it will appear in the related sewer regulations instead, clarify the roles and responsibilities of the commissioner's authorized representative, and make other corrections and clarifications throughout, end quote, be enacted?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. And I would note that the planning board has already voted for in favor, zero against, and zero abstention to recommend the adoption. Do we have any discussion about placing this on the warrant? Hearing none, all in favor of placing on the warrant. It is on the warrant.
I move to recommend this article.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of recommending this, that is a five-zero vote to recommend.
I move to place Article eight, shall an ordinance entitled, quote, ordinance amending the town of Rockport land use ordinance, section 600 dash administration, by adopting and incorporating by reference the main uniform building code effective July 1st, 2016, which would increase life safety requirements and construction standards, but make no change in the legal actions, enforcement powers, or penalties for violations, unquote, be enacted?
Second.
Moved and seconded. The question is to place this on the warrant. Discussion on placing it on the warrant?
I don't want to, but I trust the citizens, so.
But that's in your recommendation.
Yeah. Well, but he can vote against placing it on the warrant as well.
You could.
Got the power. Nothing.
Okay. I'm gonna call the vote anyway. All in favor of placing this on the warrant, raise your hand. It is five all. It is on the warrant. Now, I would say that the planning board votes four in favor, zero against, zero abstention to recommend the adoption of this ordinance.
I move to recommend this ordinance.
Second.
It is moved and seconded. Do we have discussion on recommendation on this? Hearing none?
Wait, 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 are we talking about the ordinance or just recommendation?
Recommendation. What recommendation we wish to give to the citizens, whether they should.
Oh, so now's my time to talk about it?
That would be your time.
Okay, so Jamie and I were talking, I was a little bit confused about that last bit, enforcement powers or penalties for violations? Now, my understanding is, is that, yes, that won't change. There will be no change in the legal actions, enforcement powers, or penalties for violations. However, comma, we're taking on an entire new building code, which does have some enforcement powers and new penalties for violations that don't currently exist. So though it doesn't change our current ones, there will be new ones, and I just don't feel like that is known in the wording. Did that make sense? And the way that I talked to Jamie about it was, currently, right now, if you come and look and you're like, wow, you use two-by-fours for your roof rafters, you should have used two-by-sixes, there's no way for them to do a penalty or a violation and ask for money. However, there will be once MUBEC comes into place. So I just feel like it kinda gives, it leads people to believe that there's nothing, absolutely nothing will change, we just get this code, when there are going to be a lot of new areas and places where there could be penalties for violations. That's my kinda two cents there.
So, oh, can I? My question is, is the writing of this warrant, is there a reason why it says, but make no change in the legal action, blah, 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 blah? When, if it is indeed true, and I assume it is, of what Owen just told us? What, so why is this verbiage in here if there are actually new penalties that are in play?
Okay, Jamie Franco-Mano from the Planning and Development Department. The reason that the, that last wording is in there is a recommendation from the town attorney, and a fairly succinct one. She found a state statute, 30A, section 3003, sub four, which states, any ordinance adopting a code, portion, or amendment by reference, meaning, we don't have the building code sitting in a town clerk's office for you to go and inspect. It's a uniform building code. Anybody, if you adopt it by reference, it shall state the penalty for violating the code, et cetera. So, the, no part of any such penalty may be incorporated by reference. So, a couple of different ways that Owen and Tracy have phrased this so far are, there are a bunch of new penalties in there, which is incorrect. There are a bunch of new ways to get charged a penalty, which is entirely correct. So, the, if you, if you cannot, there are many new offenses possible, the same penalty. So, those smaller, undersized joists in a roof structure, you will not pass the fifth out of seven inspections.
And therefore, because you come back to inspect, that is in a sense.
You're in the same place as where you would not have gotten a C of O if the code officer had an objection on that basis. So, the, the limitations are many more. But whatever penalties we have now, whether it's double the fee, whether it's from the fee schedule that I brought to you on purpose in advance of this potential change, the, that's the full roster of penalties that you could get, but there are many more things you could do wrong to, to make you wind up receiving one of them. And that's the best understanding I have of it. I didn't ask Amy Chow to elaborate on it back in March, because it seemed relatively straightforward. When you have a warrant, the, the constable is warning the public, hey, there's something going on, you better watch out, it's for changes in penalties.
But we are not changing the penalties for non-conformance, because those are already laid out in our fee structure.
Correct.
So, yeah, so to clarify, now, if you have undersized joists, you cannot not give a certificate of occupancy. Or, I, I don't know if that particular thing is true. But if there is something that under no code, you would still have to give a certificate of occupancy. But under the code, you would have to get that fixed before you could get your certificate of occupancy. But it's the same penalty, it's just for different things.
Correct.
Is that, I, I'm just trying to clarify.
That's absolutely correct.
So, it's not like all of a sudden now we can seize your home and not give it back.
Right.
We are using the same kinds of penalties, there are just more places, more things that you have to, checkboxes that have to be checked off before you can get through the process.
Sure, that is correct.
And my understanding is also if somebody already owns a building, has the building, and wishes to make an addition to the building, they don't have to bring the rest of it up to this code. If, if it's a privately owned building.
That's a question of law that turns on the definition of substantial renovation.
Yeah.
If for some reason the cost, the estimated value of the renovation was more than half the assessed value, you, you may not be correct in that assumption.
So, I wanted to add a garage.
Yeah.
I didn't have to go rebuild my roof.
But my reality is, is if what happened to my house last year happened, I would fall under that, because it was more than half of my house. So they could have come through and said, your joists aren't close enough together, even though my joists weren't the problem.
I see what you mean.
So, yeah. There's many questions about the substance, and, you know, you're in, at this point, in that marketing and education question about how much do we include in a warrant article? I land squarely in the Paul Gibbons camp for adding detail, and that's why you've got what you've got. But you could change it in this public hearing.
Okay. Is there discussion on recommend, on the recommendation?
I will not propose wordsmithing this if you all are just gonna kind of vote against me, because then it's just a waste of time. But I would like to see something in effect, just simply stating, someone brighter than me can synthesize it down, but there are a lot more places of which you could be assess the already existing penalties for violations.
I wouldn't have a problem with that on his face, the only issue is it's been approved by council at this point, and if we change it, we may change, if we change it tonight, we may change it the wrong way, and then, and then screw up the whole thing.
This is, the, the language has been, has been vetted by town council already, you know.
Oh, what does that mean?
I guess that doesn't carry the same weight for me.
Everyone's free to ignore the advice of their attorney.
Yeah, I do it all the time, he's my brother-in-law.
Right. What I put in there was, we're gonna increase the life safety requirements, but you could be even better warned if you, if you added more.
You got something?
More information on the warrant article.
Yep.
Added more penalties, second.
Okay, what we have in front of us is whether to recommend or not recommend. I'm gonna call for the vote, all in favor of recommending. There is not a unanimous vote, so I'm gonna call the roll. Cassas?
Not recommending or against.
Okay, Murphy?
Four.
McKinley?
Four.
Recommend four.
Chapman, four. The vote is four in favor, one against, hence a recommendation. Move to Article nine, who is to read this one?
It's your turn, it's his turn.
Oh, yeah. Do I have to say something before I start reading?
No, just say.
All right, shall an ordinance entitled, quote, ordinance amending the town of Rockport land use ordinance, section 805.3 dash private ways, to allow the code enforcement officer to issue a permit for some private ways that currently require planning board approval, to clarify what materials are required to support an application, and to impose a requirement for notice to abutters for some applications, end quote, be enacted? Question?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none, in favor of placing this on the warrant? That is unanimous.
Move to recommend Article nine as placed on the warrant.
Second.
And I would state at this point, the planning board voted four in favor, four against, a zero against, and zero abstention to recommend. Discussion on the recommendation? All in favor of recommending the approval of this article, that is unanimous.
Move to place Article 10 on the warrant, shall an ordinance entitled, ordinance amending the town of Rockport land use ordinance, section 1400 dash shoreline zoning, section 917 dash land use tables, section 918 dash dimensional table, and section 913 dash downtown, which would clarify. which would clarify the permitted uses and standards for development in a portion of the section nine thirteen downtown zoning district," close quote, be enacted.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
I have a comment.
A comment?
Um, after section nine seventeen, there's an N dash instead of an M dash. Probably the only person in the room that would notice that, but setting type for enough years. So if we could make that an M dash instead of an N dash, a longer dash instead of the shorter dash. I don't know if.
I don't think it requires.
There's a different kind of dash there.
Even after you pointed it out, I couldn't see.
Oh!
The wrong dash.
Where are these, those on the, I don't even know how to do that.
I didn't even know that.
No, nine one seven.
Yeah, I got it.
Not dash land use table.
It, it's the physical length of the dash that appears on the piece of paper.
It's an N dash instead of an M dash.
Does this go to mind?
You can leave it anytime.
Okay. Okay, Article ten, with the noted typographical correction. Do we have questions further about this? Just, I, I'm not gonna take that as an amendment or need to amend. It's just a typographical component here. So they all appear consistent. Owen?
I have a question. If you, even sitting on this board, don't know what that means, can I abstain? I don't, I'm just being honest here and I out myself. I, I don't know what that means. I don't wanna waste the time to be spun up on it. I don't mind recommending it. I'm just curious how that would work. Is that an acceptable?
I can give you a short explanation of, of what it means if you want.
No, 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 I wanna know about the abstaining part.
If, you can abstain.
It'll count as.
And then we will count it as an affirmative vote.
That's.
A load of.
That's in the town charter.
Um, you know, and let's, let's use this as a learning moment. Perhaps in the future, when we have these, maybe before this meeting is when we need copies of all of this. So as part of this packet, perhaps those actual ordinance chunks could have been given to us again. I mean, I know what they are, but.
But an explanation you're looking for?
Well, not even, I, I, well.
You know what it is.
I haven't, I, I don't personally need an explanation. I actually read the ordinance, but maybe that would be a good thing to do is in the future, when we're going over these, is to make sure we have the verbiage in front of us so that we can read it over ourselves with, you know, whatever, strike through or whatever.
And I know I've talked about portions of this, but I know there are other portions of this that I have not talked about.
I, I would make a suggestion that later in the meeting, we're gonna get to this LD sixteen forty-nine. If you look at it, all LDs carry a summary. And maybe it would be appropriate to provide a summary of what the change is. In the case of LD sixteen forty-nine, it's quite lengthy. But having been on the LPC, I can tell you, some of them are just a small paragraph. But I agree, you know, it would be good to have this.
As part of the, as part of the background.
Yeah. Part of our background information.
Or you can go to all the ORC meetings, or you can come to the planning board meetings where we talked about that in public hearing last week.
And these changes are all available over at the town office and the community development.
Jamie's the man.
If I might, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, the, there does exist a summary. I, I publish it as the planner's notes. It's not in your packet, and we'll remember that for next time. My reason for addressing you now, before you make a motion to put this on the warrant, is that in the last ORC meeting of March thirty-first, and at the planning board public hearing of April the sixth, a, a small modification, but significant enough that I wanna call your attention to, was made in the language. So what I give to the town clerk for the language, I need to update after your vote. So perhaps on this item only, I should go through my summary of the ORC's work on the, on the amendment.
It will be necessary, because we were thinking we were voting on one thing, and now it turns out we're voting on something else.
Oh, it's a very minor change, but still, yeah, it's worth going through.
Very good. So in the downtown zoning district, there are several lots called out by this proposed amendment. That list should be familiar. It's from last year. What this is is a clarifying amendment. But what is different since March thirty-first in the ORC's recommendation, and what the planning board voted on, is that parcels with frontage on Central Street can now go up to this greater maximum height, no matter what the permitted use is. It's gotta be a permitted use, but no matter what. And now on the Main Street side, a compromise has been worked out, where the Fish and Ships, um, uh, Boat Yard parcels, Rockport Marine and Fish and Ships, with their owners represented at, at the meetings, agreed that they should only go up to this new maximum height if the use is marine-related. So that they cannot take advantage of this newfound development potential to put in residential or, or other uses. So.
Okay.
That's what was hashed out over a whole season, where members of the ORC in different ways tried to encourage compromise. And finally, representatives of owners on Main Street and representatives of owners on Central Street agreed on, on this solution.
And I might add too, that part of the reason for doing, for coming to that solution was to satisfy DEP, because it is within the shoreline zone. And without restricting that higher height to marine uses, it might not pass DEP muster for the shoreline zone. Where, where it is marine-related uses, other towns have made the argument that in order to stay competitive in the marine business in this day and age, they have to have the higher roof heights to, to accommodate the larger boats. But if, if the previous wording would have allowed any structure to be fifty feet down there, but that, it was thought would not pass DEP muster. So that was the reason for that last minute change, and I think it's worked out well.
Okay.
The motion to place, I think, is on the floor.
The motion to place is on the floor. Do we have further discussion?
I've been educated.
Okay, that's good. An educated man is good. All in favor of placing on the warrant? That is unanimous.
I move to recommend this article.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on recommendation? Hearing none, all in favor of recommending? That is unanimous. We're now going to Articles eleven and on. There, the copy that was provided to us this evening had some errors in it. I have been given the correct numbers. Some of this is due to the West Rockport Fire Station article. Uh, there's another one, and I'm not clear on that one. But I'm gonna read Article eleven. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the following as revenue from the following sources to be used in reducing the property tax assessment for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen fiscal year. A, general government, one million sixty thousand four hundred thirty-eight dollars. Public assistance, thirteen thousand two six, two hundred sixty-five dollars. Public safety, two hundred thirty-one thousand five eighty-two dollars. Public works, seventy-five thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Culture and recreation, two hundred, one hundred twenty-two thousand five hundred eighteen dollars. All others, all other cemeteries, ten thousand two hundred fifty dollars. Unassigned fund balance, this is a change, fifty-one thousand dollars. Special assessments, one hundred twenty-five thousand twenty-three dollars. For a total, and this is a different number, one million six eighty-nine thousand eight twenty-six."
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. The ninety-nine thousand for West Rockport was inadvertently re-contained, retained.
Question on the letter that we had from the Budget Committee about.
These are revenues, not expenditure.
We're not there yet.
That's what I was asking, where do those show up?
But question on the Budget Committee vote, nine four zero against. Did they have the, the modified numbers?
I will need to ask that of the Chair.
These aren't their final recommendation votes, right?
Okay. They had, their numbers were the ones that were originally written here, effectively ninety-nine thousand dollars more.
Right. So in terms of.
They are meeting again tomorrow night to take final thoughts.
These are not their final votes that are here.
They'll meet again and do another recommend, okay.
If they wanna change recommendations.
Including planning board or just budget?
No, just budget.
Just budget.
They can only change ones that we change. They can't go back and vote on something that we don't change.
Oh, you mean the recommendation?
Right, the recommendation. So they will meet tomorrow. Anything we change or that had to be changed because of other things, they can re-vote on.
That is correct.
So they can't re-vote on this.
If we don't change anything.
These numbers aren't gonna change.
They're gonna change too, but those, yes. This one, they can re-vote on.
Okay.
If they wish. Ken?
They should, because it's different, but that's up to their chairman, I guess.
Okay. The motion is on the floor with the corrected numbers.
So now we're voting to recommend?
We are voting.
To recommend or not?
With this to place.
Okay, this is to place.
Yeah. All in favor of placing? That is done.
Move to recommend Article eleven as placed.
Second.
And I would vote that at this point, no, at this point, the Budget Committee had already recommended nine in favor with zero abstentions and zero against. And this is effectively a reduction in the revenues that are gonna be brought in. Again, I reiterate, this is revenue. So with that, all in favor of recommending? That is unanimous. I will now go to the next one, which I'm also gonna read, because there's a change. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the following for general government for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen fiscal year. A, administration, forty-six thousand five hundred thirty dollars. B, town manager, two hundred thirty-six thousand five hundred fifty dollars. C, town clerk, this is a change, two hundred twelve thousand sixty dollars. Plant, D, planning and develop, community development, two hundred twenty-six thousand eight hundred sixty dollars. E, finance, one hundred twenty-seven thousand eight hundred twenty dollars. F, assessing, one hundred eighty-seven thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars. G, town office building, one hundred eight thousand sixty-two dollars. H, insurance, fifty-six thousand eight eight seven dollars. For a total of one million two hundred two thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars."
So moved.
Second.
Second. The change was solely in the town clerk. I am not.
Was a typo.
It was a typo.
Okay.
Okay, this was a typo.
Because they voted on the, they vote, this is the number that was voted on, two, two, uh, two hundred and twelve thousand?
Okay, so the Budget Committee has already voted two hundred and twelve thousand sixty dollars for the town clerk for a total of one million two hundred two thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars.
So this is just a typo in this, on this particular iteration of it?
Correct.
Okay. So if we approve this, they don't need to re-vote. Placing it on the ballot. All in favor of placing it on the warrant? That is unanimous.
Move to recommend Article twelve as placed.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor of pla, of making a positive recommendation? That is unanimous. And let me see here now. Um, somebody wanna read Article thirteen?
Uh, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the following for public assistance for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen fiscal year. General assistance, twenty-seven thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars for the total of the same."
Second.
Moved and seconded to place on the warrant. Discussion? All in favor? We've placed it on the warrant. Do we have a recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to recommend. Discussion? All in favor of recommending? That is unanimous. I'm gonna read Article fourteen. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate for, for, the following for public safety for tw, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen fiscal year. A, police department, six hundred sixteen thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars. B, fire department, three hundred ninety-nine thousand eight hundred two dollars. C, West Port, West Rockport Fire Station, here's a change, four thousand one hundred seventy-nine dollars. D, publicly funded utilities, two hundred twenty-two thousand ten dollars. E, animal control, eleven thousand four hundred thirty-five dollars. F, harbor master, one hundred fifty-five thousand four hundred forty-three dollars. G, public safety building, thirty thousand four hundred eighty-seven dollars. H, emergency management, four thousand seventy dollars for a total of, and this is a change, one million seven hundred forty-four thousand one hundred seventeen dollars."
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to place on the warrant. Discussion? None? All in favor? That is on the warrant.
I move to recommend this article.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous. I'll leave this to somebody else.
There you go, Jeff. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate for engineering and design of a municipally-owned fiber-to-the-premises network, FTP, to serve all Rockport residences and businesses for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen fiscal year. Design and engineering, three hundred thousand, total of three hundred thousand."
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Um.
Yes.
I just somehow thought that the fiber-to-the-premise network was worded differently. I thought it was fiber-to-the-home, or I thought there was a different terminology for it, but maybe I'm.
Fiber-to-the-premises, it, it, fiber-to-the-home typically gets confused. Uh, we just took people's homes.
Right.
And it's fiber to every business and every home residence and business.
So if I was to look up FTP?
That's the new.
It's a very commonly used term.
That's the new language.
Any other questions or discussion?
And please note that this does not, the engineering study.
Thank you, Jamie.
Does not mandate the third of the three options that we have, which, we have options that where it grazes, goes by, and then attaches everything.
This just determines the final cost.
This is the information that is necessary.
Okay. No further discussion? All in favor of placing on the warrant? That is unanimous.
Move to recommend.
Second.
Moved and seconded to recommend. Discussion? Yes.
I'm sorry. Weren't we talking about taking this to town meeting to the live part?
Yes, it is.
That's where it is.
Fourteen because I'm, fifteen because I'm just asleep. Okay, good. Yeah.
Well, yeah, once we went past number ten. After number ten, these are on the, the.
I, I knew that, I knew that.
No, I know you do it.
It's, it's only ten minutes to ten, so. It has been moved to recommend.
Second.
And seconded. All in favor of recommending? That is unanimous. Who wants sixteen?
"To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the following for public works for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen fiscal year. B, which I believe should say A. Public works, does that mean I should stop reading, or are we just gonna fix that? Okay.
Just say A.
A, public works, one million four hundred and seventy thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. B, sanitation, one hundred and sixty-three thousand three hundred and eleven dollars for a total of one million six hundred and thirty-four thousand eighty-six dollars."
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of placing on the warrant? That is unanimous.
Move to recommend.
Second.
The motion is to recommend, and it has been seconded. Discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous.
Just a quickie, why, wouldn't sixteen, like, just make sense logically to go after fourteen? Cause, I don't know.
No, because fifteen was part of publicly funded utilities, and it got popped out here.
Uh, okay.
So it's like fourteen A.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, and move to place Article seventeen on the warrant. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the following for culture and recreation for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen fiscal year. A, library, four hundred thirty-nine thousand fifty-eight dollars. B, conservation commission, eight thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. C, parks and recreation, fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and one dollars. D,..." D, opera house, eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars. E, library building parentheses, one lime rock, three thousand, eight hundred dollars, total of five hundred ninety-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Second.
It's moved and seconded, discussion, comment?
This is one of, this is the article, one of the articles that this, uh, Budget Committee is recommending an increase in, it would be at thirty, um, three thousand, seven hundred and fifty doll, dollars in the, um, parks budget, right, Megan? It would go into parks for the, um, backstop. That was their recommendation that we include half of the money for backstop in.
So that was under RES building.
Yeah, that's the wrong place.
Oh, okay, yes, yeah.
We're not there yet.
Oh, okay, yep.
Article twenty.
Yeah.
We're not there yet.
We were wrong, we're tired.
We could be, this, if we want, we could take another hour to get there.
We could.
Yeah.
Okay, we have it as written.
Sorry.
It's been moved and seconded to place on the warrant, all in favor? That's unanimous.
Move to recommend as placed.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion, all in favor of a recommendation, that is in positive, I'm going to read this next one. Uh, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the following for long-term debt, parent debt payments, end of the parent, uh, for twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen fiscal year. A, debt, one million, four hundred, oh, back up, I'm going to read it again, I had an extra comma there. One hundred forty-two thousand, five hundred ten dollars for a total of one hundred forty-two thousand, five hundred ten dollars.
So moved.
That's why he read it.
That's why, yeah, it's another change, another typo, another typo.
So I moved, I don't know if anybody seconded.
Yeah, it was.
Okay.
For the, now, Jan, which number do you have, the hundred forty-two or the hundred?
Hundred forty.
Okay, this is a change then. Yeah.
So the Budget Committee, Mr. Chairman, the Budget Committee voted on the one forty-two number?
I'm not sure what they voted on, but the speaker is wrong, what's in the budget.
Right.
That's the number we had of the budget.
Okay.
Okay, probably worthwhile somebody verifying what the Budget Committee voted on, because this is an increase and therefore you would need to if you hadn't already voted, the hundred and forty-two, so, um, all in favor of placing this on the warrant? That is on the warrant, all.
Move to recommend.
Second.
Moved and seconded to recommend, all in favor? That is unanimous, who wants nineteen?
I moved, uh, to place Article nineteen on the ballot to, or on the warrant to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the following for county fees for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen fiscal year. A, county service E nine one one, fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. B, county service dispatch, twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars for a total of eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars.
Second.
Moved and seconded, I would note that on my printed copy, there is just a punctuation all.
There's a tad missing.
Well, the, all little dots are missing too, before the county service dispatch.
Yep.
Okay, Owen?
I have a question and it could totally just be me.
Yep.
I don't remember seeing these numbers when we went through the budget, is that just me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The county assessment is broken out separate from dispatch and nine-one-one fees. So the county assessment is a fairly large number and then these are two numbers included in that county budget, but they are county assessment. They're fees that the county assesses for use of their services.
Yeah, so they were rolled into something that I had looked at and voted on.
And that we have no control over.
Okay.
Very little.
Great, good enough.
All right, no further discussion, all in favor of placing on the warrant, that is unanimous?
Move to recommend.
Second.
Moved and seconded to recommend, no discussion, all in favor? That is unanimous.
Okay, now we're talking about Article twenty.
Yes.
We have a new page.
I've got to find it. Oh, there it is, right there.
So I moved to place Article twenty on the ballot to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the following for cemeteries, RES East, and special assessments for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen fiscal year. A, cemeteries, fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars. B, RES East, nine thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars. C, special assessments, six thousand, eight hundred dollars for a total of seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars.
Second.
All right.
I'm surprised you missed the Oxford comma.
What was the, um?
Why, it makes me crazy, but.
Tracy, what was the total again, please?
Seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars.
Okay. Uh, on this copy right here, this is the new one.
Oh.
I just want to remind you that if you put the money into the reserve, you have to vote authorize the reserve at some point prior to July first.
We have to create the reserve.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, oh, is that why it doesn't have a line like RES East does?
No.
It's, it would be in the cemetery, within the cemetery budget, there would be.
We'd have to create the reserve fund.
Yeah, we have to create a reserve so it'll get one of those real long numbers. And then we will actually be putting money in it so it can make Megan's job a lot harder by keeping track of another.
So these numbers are numbers that reflect the changes that the Budget Committee recommended or asked for.
Is requesting, yeah.
And I would like to speak.
And I hear no objection.
Well, I would like to speak, um, and that is that the, you, it, the, the copy that I have shows the Budget Committee voted nine for this object, and we did not vote for it. We tabled it to see what you would do with the idea that we did not wish to, we would not vote against the, the, um, the article. We simply wanted to make some suggestions and then wait to see what you did, uh, thank you very much for taking our suggestions, um, seriously and to heart. And we will be meeting tomorrow night and I expect us to vote, um, uh, eight, uh, eight for, because heaven will not be there, so I, I think that, that, um, but do, I do thank you very much for your indulgence.
Could I ask a question of Jan while he's there?
Did anyone voice any objections to these additional, I know you didn't have the, the full-on formal vote, but would, did anyone raise any sort of objections to these additional?
No, there were no objections and the people who asked for the two separate, um, um, requests said specifically they would not vote against the article if the Select Board did not include it. We simply wanted it raised as an issue, which is why there is no zero vote and it should simply say, no vote, we're wait, we were waiting, we made a suggestion and we were waiting to, to hear, but no, um, there was no, no vote for nothing, not at all.
So another question, uh, how is it that, in the terms of the normal timing of requests, et cetera, et cetera, how is it that the backstop got in late? What was it, what's the backstory?
Um, the back, the backstop came up during the, during the budget meeting, um, when we went over this, it wasn't in the manager, neither the manager nor the, um, um, town manager had this money in and we had a, um, Betsy Saltonstall, who sits on the MRC Board, brought up at the meeting, um, Peter Johnson, who one of my members, brought up at the meeting that we should fund the backstop, it was an integral part of town, it looked like hell and, um, at some point it was going to fall over and crush some small child. I had that myself, um, Betsy Saltonstall mentioned that the MRC Board, which is trying to be a good citizen as a nonprofit, would be interested in funding the backstop and I thought if we could get the Select Board to fund half of it and she could, we could then go to MRC and ask them to fund half of it, that might spring the money loose from them on a practical, rather than a theoretical basis, um, that for thirty-seven hundred and fifty dollars, we could have a brand-new backstop. So that's where that money came from, the money for the cemeteries is a, to establish a new reserve fund for the columbarium that we would like to, that the Cemetery Committee would like to have eventually, it's going to cost a significant amount of money, so rather than ask for a significant amount of money, we, uh, we wanted to start a, um, a reserve fund and that came as a request from the summer, a conversation with the Cemetery Committee.
And so the, if, if MRC decides not to step up for the half.
Then we don't spend our part.
You don't spend.
You've put it in the bu, you've put it in the budget and we don't spend it.
So you're not going to put that in the reserve?
I'm ready, oh, yeah, that'll happen next year.
Yeah, we would just, we would just sort of lock it away in the back pocket rather than establish a reserve fund, it seems like a crazy thing to do.
Jan? A couple of things, I, I just throw this out, I don't know whether you need an answer or not, but as far as the backstop goes, I know in some communities they have, you know, local advertisements on the backstop, I don't know if we could offset, you know, some revenue for that or something.
We talked about, we talked about that and for some reason it seemed like that was going to be a non-starter.
It would violate our, but, our sign ordinance.
If you can be seen from the street, it would violate our sign.
Because I thought there were, I thought there were those out of the Mars Jones.
You can't see those from the street.
Okay.
It was a non, it was a non-starter.
My x-ray vision.
And the other question, or other comment I have is, I'm, I'm all for the cemetery reserve account because there are needs at the cemeteries, but if we're counting in that reserve account to get a columbarium, it's going to take us an awful long time to get it at that rate.
Guess we're getting one drawer, one drawer at a time.
Because it's about a hundred thousand dollars basically in round numbers.
We'll all be dead in a while, yeah, well, I think maybe it's a, um, um, that this is a teaser amount.
And that's fine.
To, to, to next year, um, and every year after thereafter, keep doubling it, um, until, until we finally have a columbarium.
Because I think the need, the need for it is going to come much sooner than, than at this rate that we'll, because we're going to need it within a handful of years, I think.
Yeah.
I don't object to it.
Okay, I, I want to object to it because I don't think we have a complete accounting of what is in the cemetery reserve fund now. People will say it's the perpetual care money, but we don't have a complete accounting. When Ginny had gone through this, she identified that a portion of it really had to be considered reserve money. There was quite a bit over and above it that is unattributable, you know, I, I'm, I'm not going to say unaccounted for, it's there, it's money, it's obviously got an accounting for it, but, yeah, I, I have an objection to starting a reserve fund without knowing what monies we already have that might be usable for this expansion of the cemetery, because this is an expansion of it, it's, it's not creating a new cemetery, it's expanding a different one and making it more available for a longer period of time.
So is, is the money you're talking about not identified as corpus and therefore inviolate?
What I understand from our discussions, and this is with the Investment Committee, that there is a certain amount that cannot be touched, as you put it, corpus. You know, uh, you know, not going down that line of, not, not at this hour, but you know, that it's there, it, it is there to writ, to earn income to provide perpetual care, there's another amount over that that we're not, and when I say we, I'm in, sort of including the Investment Committee. Not exactly sure why it's there or what it's there for, it very well may be that it should be in the, considered as part of the perpetual fund, but at this point, and this goes back again to what Ginny had identified, that there are really two components in that fund and some we really know can't be touched and the other is there for some undesigned purpose that we at this point have not identified.
Mr. Chairman, I, I seem to remember in our Investment Committee report that they recommended that we could only use five thousand dollars out of that money for purposes of keeping, of keeping the thing solvent, so I guess I'm.
And part of that was because of the unknown factor of what the remainder of that money was, because the five thousand was really the interest or the income that had been earned over the previous year and I'm going to ask Megan to, uh, listen.
So as of our June thirtieth, twenty fifteen audit, four hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars of the cemetery portion of the investment is what they call the principal portion or the portion that we can't touch and that's updated on an annual basis when they do our audit. In our investment, our total investments, including ones of our Harbor Trust and the First, we have five hundred twenty-two thousand. So that leaves us a little less than a hundred thousand to work with. The fear is that the investments are not going to come back, last month was the first month this entire fiscal year that we have seen a positive on our returns instead of a negative. So their recommendation was the five thousand to give us more of a buffer if the stock market continues to drop. From speaking with Linda, to go back and quantify that four hundred forty-one thousand would be extremely time-consuming. Everything from two thousand eight-ish on was done in a different system, so I don't even have that on the computer anymore. And anything even older than that is all handwritten in books and it would be extremely hard to determine how that four hundred forty-one thousand was, how they determine four hundred forty-one thousand is the correct number, but I do know that it is listed in the audit as that is the perpetual care amount.
So we can assume that four hundred forty-one thousand, for argument purposes, is the perpetual fund?
Correct.
Anything over that has been earned off of it?
Correct.
Or?
I think from in the past what they did was they commingled the funds with cemetery and I know some of those funds were from wills that people have, because I know, for example, this one person that left, I believe it was like thirty-five hundred dollars for the care of their lot. So how could, it's for that particular person's lot, so, but that's counted in that money. I don't know how many other wills had left money for particular lots, that's something that we have to do research and find all of those.
And as far as I can tell, there, it has never been broken out in the audit, nor is there any trail in our current system to determine, like she said, that money that people had specifically set aside in their wills for that, all I know is the total number.
And that's not an uncommon problem in, in, around the country, I would imagine.
But we know from the auditor that there is an amount that is considered to be reserved that we can't touch. Four hundred and forty-one thousand.
Correct.
That there is an amount over that, that my point is, we, before we establish a new reserve, we need to look into whether or not we should use that or consider using that, because if we build a columbarium, that by setting our fees at the correct, and we've already told the committee, the Cemetery Committee, look at the fees because they're way under what everybody else is, if we look at and reasonably price the blocks or sections in the columbarium, that will be bringing in more money that will offset whatever we might withdraw out of that over a period of time. And to right now start and say, we're going to create a reserve account that we know is not, you know, it's going to take years and years and years to be able to build up to the level of what the cost of even a small columbarium will be, that we, we're just stabbing at something here and I'll ask Megan again.
You could also look at the option of a lease agreement or a loan payment plan where you would take X amount out of the investment instead of, to offset moving costs and things like that, it would offset your loan or lease payment for the columbarium, which would be a less amount over time, which would give your investment a chance to build back up to where it was, depending on if the stock market goes up or not.
Comments, other thoughts?
I have to say, I'm, I'm uncomfortable saying that this difference between the principal and the total is money that we can somehow play with. So I, I want to take that off of the proverbial table because that's not the decision we're making. Um, I think it's a good idea to think about having a, uh, reserve account for the columbarium. Perhaps now isn't the right time to do it, but I think that's the question, is whether or not we want to put together this, uh, reserve fund or not. And I think if we just stick to that question right now, I mean, the good thing about putting money away is it reminds us next year that this is something that's. is it reminds us next year that this is something that's important to us. And even though we are pretty good right now at remembering from year to year what's important to us, it is a good idea to earmark things for specific reasons.
Building on what Tracy just said, if we were to understand that four hundred and plus better about where the money was, where it came from, if we had this reserve account and we did have clarity on that money, would we be able to shift the appropriate amount of funds into this appropriate cemetery reserve account, adding clarity to where and who has control over what money?
That is a discussion I think we would need to take on another day.
And we can set up, we can set that up anytime we want to. We don't have to have money to put into, to set up a reserve account. So we could do that at any time. We don't have to put twenty-five hundred dollars into it to, to set it up.
Isn't there like a minimum you have to put into an account to have it be an account?
No, because it's all, it's all money. It's all.
Well, that's still money.
But it's in our accounting system. It's not a bank account. It's in our accounting system.
Right, but we can set up a budget line that says reserve account and not put anything into it. So does, I, I, I don't remember who seconded, but if somebody wants to take their second back and I'll take back my motion, we can get new numbers if there's a strong feeling that we should take that twenty-five hundred dollars out at this point.
I, I am in favor of leaving it in, quite honestly. I think, you know, not necessarily for a columbarium, but for other expenses, particularly given what the investment committee told us this year, that they could only comfortably say from the, the invested funds that we would only be able to draw five thousand off. I think having twenty-five hundred in a reserve account for the cemetery is not a bad thing to have for unexpected expenses. And if it does remind us next year to, to say, well, we want to look at that columbarium a little more carefully and think about how do we want to fund it, then I'm, I'm okay with leaving it in.
But could you use that for unexpected expenses?
If it's a cemetery reserve account.
You could use it for anything in a cemetery. It wouldn't be unless we specifically designate it as for a columbarium. At this point, we don't have the reserve account established. And as Megan has already pointed out, we would have to take a vote before, between now and the end of June to establish that reserve so that that money could go in. And when we establish the reserve, we could specify what it was, the purpose of it.
And I actually disagree. I don't think we'd have to do it by June 30th because I think the money will be budgeted when she puts it in there. She could put it in the reserve account in November and we would just have to establish it before she transfers it.
Oh, all right, you know.
Whatever time we do.
Whatever it is.
Yeah, I'm not gonna, okay. So it sounds like there's at least two people who feel strongly to leave it in. So, and I'm fine with leaving it in. The other two of you may want to weigh in. But it looks like we're up to three that think it's a reasonable thing to leave it out.
And the motion, I think, is on the floor to place it as it was read.
Yes, that's what it was.
Motion was to place as read. Well, it was to play, it was to allocate fifty-seven thousand, three hundred thirty-two dollars, which in theory would include twenty-five hundred for a reserve fund that we have not yet established. So.
So long as that's our intent, that's mine.
Okay, so, wait a minute.
The motion is, yes.
Can I just make sure that your A is fifty-seven, three, three, two?
Yes. Five, seven, three, three, two.
Thank you.
Okay, so if we're good with that, then I think we're ready.
Ready to call the motion? All right, we are voting on.
Placing.
Placing this on the warrant. Thank you.
Oh, I have a question. When it gets on the warrant, will future columbarium?
Those two lines at the bottom will not appear. The motion is to place on the warrant. All in favor of placing on the warrant? All right, I'll go along with it.
Move to, move to recommend.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Discussion? I'm not happy, but I will vote for it.
Thank you.
All in favor of recommending? That is unanimous.
Thank you, Bill.
Yes.
I have a question. This is Article 20.
Yes.
At what point do we want to talk about the Midco Solid Waste?
I was going to suggest that we do it after Article 21 because Article 21 is the property tax levy. That's the LD1.
I just wanted to check. All right. I move to place Article 21 on the ballot to see if the town will vote to increase the property tax levy limit of three million, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars established by state law in the event that the municipal budget approved under the previous warrant articles will result in a tax commitment that is greater than the current property tax levy limit per n. By state law, the vote on this article must be by written ballot per n.
Second.
Moved and seconded. That's the one I remembered.
There you go.
I knew we were going to take a secret ballot at town meeting. Okay. It's moved and seconded to place on the warrant. All in favor of placing on the warrant? That is unanimous.
I move to recommend.
Second.
Moved and recommend. Do we have a discussion on the recommendation? All in favor? That is unanimous. I now believe this would be the appropriate location to place this, what had been referred to as Article Three.
Move to remove from the table the motion on Article Three and consider it this time.
So moved. Second, whatever.
Okay, it is moved and seconded to remove from the table what we had been earlier referring to as Article Three. All in favor? That. Now it is before us again. And here's where we get to make our choice. Do we want to have it as originally worded? Or do we want to change the wording? Or do we want to take the example from Attorney Gibbons and either place it or wordsmith it? Ken, I'm going to look for you.
I, I seem to remember somebody else saying, well, if we did it at an open town meeting, then we could leave it as the, you know, as originally written, knowing that at that time we would have the contract available for discussion purposes and we would be, you know, be able to enumerate on the floor of town meeting that it was ECO Maine and what the tipping rate was and all that kind of stuff.
At the same time, I think it's perfectly reasonable to put in ECO Maine of Portland, Maine as part of this, which is, I, I, I kind of feel like is the minimum amount of information. So I'll take a stab at this and you guys can all laugh at me because it's 10:15 at night. I move to place this article that will get a number of its very own on the ballot. Shall the town accept the recommend?
Let me stop right there because the town meeting has to be to see if the town will vote.
Okay, so to see if the town shall vote to accept the recommendation of Midco Solid Waste Corporation, MCSWC, for the handling of municipal, the disposition of municipal solid waste by ECO Maine of Portland, Maine, after the termination of the current contract with Penobscot Energy Recovery Corporation, PERC, on March 30th, 2018.
Second.
Are we close?
We're close.
Right, yeah.
Oh, okay.
And the only other question I have is, is, and Melissa's still here, is ECO Maine located in Portland? Okay, I just, I thought it might have been South Portland.
Everything else says to see if the town will.
Okay, so to see if the town will.
So purposes of, of discussion, can we just kill PERC and just say current contract?
Yeah, I'm not entirely sure we need to have PERC in there. It's just, we're changing contracts at that point. So what we're talking about is what are we going to do after March 31st, 2018?
Okay, I'll do this. I move that we remove the words "with Penobscot Energy Recovery Corporation, parent, PERC, and parent" from the motion.
Second.
Does that meet your? The motion, the amendment to the motion has been placed and seconded. All in favor? We remove that section.
Have you caught up with us, Linda?
So you're just removing current contract?
No.
No.
With PERC. Keep current contract on March 31st is how it would read.
Yeah. Yes.
So all we did was add ECO Maine of Portland, Maine and then changed the, the initial wording coming into it.
Yep.
So now.
Do we have any further discussion? This is to place it on the open town meeting warrant.
No, can you, since we're looking at it right here after 21, is that where you want to place it in the meeting?
Well, I didn't want to place it any earlier because we're talking budgets. We're talking, and you know, up until that, all the earlier ones, when we reached the open town meeting, open town meeting starts with Article 11.
And then Article 22 and past.
They're the boilerplate ones.
Are all the boilerplates that we do every year.
Yes.
People are going to lay out.
The option is to place this article in front of Article 10, but still on the open town meeting warrant. Owen?
I had a different question, if you want to finish your thought and I'll wait.
A question related to this?
Yes, and it has to do with, you all always lowercase the E in ECO Maine, almost making it difficult to know if it's a company or not. Is there a weird thingy that you put in there that says we're a company?
Not really. It was actually a branding decision made several years ago. The thing that could be done is we will often bold the entire word ECO Maine to sort of demonstrate that it's an entity.
Are you reperating?
Yeah, you are. That's the name of the corporation.
Yeah.
Then you just have to say, comma, I think.
LLC or whatever.
I don't agree with that. You have to use the exact words of the corporation, the Secretary of State, it's lowercase letters. Put it big if you want to, but don't try changing the name of the corporation because if you start doing that, you find out you've actually named a different corporation.
Leave it as ECO Maine. We can boldface it if that was.
After looking at it so many times, I still get a little confused. That was my only reason.
Well, I mean, it's going to be on open floor of the town meeting.
Yep, and we can address it then. Yep.
And I think it's clear taking PERC out too.
Yeah.
It's like too much extraneous information.
Okay. Further discussion on placing this article on the warrant? All in favor of placing this on the warrant? Now I'm going to ask a separate question before we recommend. Is this okay where we have placed it?
I think so.
Sure.
The only thing I might do, and I'm good with it here, is I might place it above because I kind of see Article 21 as part of boilerplate stuff. I know that that's what Camden has it as. That's the LD1 stuff.
Yeah.
But I'm not going to quibble with that at this point.
But I think, I think Article 21 sort of wraps up the budget piece though, especially where we haven't had it before.
And it says, under the previous warrant articles.
Not going to fight about it.
Yeah, I think this, I think where Bill put it is.
The only, the only alternative I would say was put it before Article 10, before we get into.
No, I would put it down here.
Okay. Are we good now? Do we have a recommendation?
Will we move? Didn't we move to?
Move to recommend.
Recommend.
Oh, I didn't hear, I said before, I said before we recommend.
Oh, okay, sorry.
We have voted to place. Now I'll take the motion to recommend.
Which Jeff made and I seconded.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion?
They just have a moment of silence for us that it's going to be difficult for what we're about to do. Thank you.
I mean, I'm, as far as, I'm going to vote to recommend. And my reasoning is that I think that the MRC board did a lot of work and I truly appreciate all the work that both Bill and Tracy did on that board. They came to a decision and I think it's a reasonably well reasoned decision. Was it an easy decision? I'm sure it wasn't for a lot of you. It's not necessarily an easy decision for me, but I am persuaded by most of the arguments that I've heard from the presentation last week, that this is the right way to go at this time. I do feel more comfortable with the five, ten, fifteen year opt-outs in the contract. That makes me feel better than I did at the meeting the other night. And also if the, the organics coming out is a possibility as well. I feel that they've responded to some of the concerns that I had the other night.
Okay.
How you doing down there, buddy?
I'm just going to call this by roll.
Do we, you want us to explain?
We'll explain at town meeting, dude.
Well.
Yeah, but, but this also, this also gets the conversation going if any of the media is, who's not present is, is watching at the time. I am going to vote against recommending it. I think the board did a lot of work, but I think that they're, I think they made the wrong decision. And I think that there are many, many compelling reasons for us to be a leader and to not be afraid of change and to lessen the carbon footprint and to, to take on our own educational component and all, a whole laundry list of things that we can do and we can do better by making a decision to not truck things as far and to utilize fiber rights technology, which may I add is, is, you know, Europe is not Mars. It's, it's not an untested thing.
Speak funny though.
But Martians speak funny, you know what I'm saying?
It is, it's unfortunate that when Midco Solid Waste took their actual vote, we were not here so that we could not stream it because there was a lot of good discussion there. I made a statement in favor of MRC and opposing ECO Maine. When we got all together here, all four select boards, that Mr. Pinchback, I could have sworn was cribbing from my notes in the statement because he made every statement or every argument that I had made a few nights before. And there is nothing that has come forward at this point that has changed my mind on that decision. Of course, if the town votes, then we will, that will be the decision. But I think that, you know, to bring it to the town, we should bring the arguments to the town. And therefore I will also be voting against.
So I guess now I get to say what I was not going to say. There were, there was a lot of information we were presented on the Midco Solid Waste Board. And I have every reason to believe that Fiber Right has some good ideas. But as a person who, who thinks deeply about public money as compared to my own personal money, we're taking a mature company, ECO Maine, who has done what they do and has done it quite well and does it as a nonprofit and does it for the benefit of the communities that they serve. And we're pitting it against a plant that is not built, that does not have all of its approvals, that has a very large amount of outside money coming in from a third party that is going to expect return on their investment. And from a public standpoint, from, from the person who feels like I need to answer to the public, I feel very comfortable with choosing ECO Maine over a plant that's not yet built. It may indeed be the wonderful thing that they're talking about. But we don't know because it's not built and it's not approved. So I feel confident that especially with this new part of the contract to allow us to opt out at different times, I really think that ECO Maine is the right decision for right now.
Owen?
Yeah.
You don't have to say anything.
No, no, and I, and I will. One thing I just wanted to, you had mentioned third party investment and they're going to expect a return on that investment. To get that return on investment, it actually has to function. So their want and desire to see that be a productive, fully functioning so they can actually realize a return on their investment, I would say they would probably work pretty hard to make sure that it worked well. I had the luxury of spending a lot of time with Jim Gera when I attended a lot of these meetings and I've, I've spent a lot of time learning about trash. I was and am quite comfortable with Fiber Right. However, comma, what's very important to me is the cohesiveness of the four towns to get better contracts in the future, to, to maintain the things that we already have going on and, and we are functioning well. If the feel was that other towns were shifting towards Fiber Right, I would vote for Fiber Right. But to try to maintain the Midco Solid Waste Corporation as it currently exists, I will begrudgingly vote for ECO Maine.
Which is to say you'll, you'll go positive on the recommendation?
Yes. Yes.
Because I know that we have a split vote, I'm going to call the roll.
Did we just do that?
No, well, didn't take, actually take the vote.
Okay.
Unless there's further comment, then I will call the roll. Cassas?
Uh, four.
I heard him say four. Murphy?
Four.
McKinley?
Four.
Parker?
Against.
Chapman?
Against.
The vote is three in favor and two against. Now, let's get back here. Who wants to take Article 22?
To see, Article 22, to see if the town will vote to authorize the transfer of all unexpendant balances to fund balance and to authorize the overdrafts that may occur in the town operations in the 2016-2017 budget to be taken from fund balance question.
Second.
Moved and seconded to place on the warrant. Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Opposed? None.
Move to recommend.
Second.
Moved and seconded to recommend. Discussion? All in favor of recommend? Yes, it, yes, it is now 5-0.
Sorry, slow on the uptake.
Who wants 23?
Article 23, to see if the town will vote to authorize the payment of tax abatements and applicable interest from the property tax overlay account.
Second.
Moved and seconded to place on the warrant. Discussion?
I have a question. Is there any way we can actually attach a number to that, or do we not know?
Don't know.
Because it's unknown at this time. Okay.
That's what Kerry determines in August, when he figures the final text. To place on the warrant. All in favor? That is paid.
Move to recommend.
Second.
Moved and seconded to recommend. Discussion? All in favor?
Move to place Article 24 on the ballot, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board on behalf of the town to sell and dispose of any real estate acquired by the town for non-payment of taxes thereon on such terms as they may deem advisable, and to execute quick claim deeds for the property. The sale or disposal shall be made only after consultation with the planning board and the conservation commission, except for the purposes of clearing title of recon, or of reconveyance of real estate to the original owner, or in the case of timeshare units, reconveyance back to the original owner or the Timeshare Estates Association of Unit Owners, property to be disposed of by written policy and on terms the select board deem advisable.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor? That is on the warrant.
Move to recommend.
Second.
Move to recommend, and it has been seconded. All in favor? Article 25.
To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board on behalf of the town to sell and dispose of any real estate acquired by the town for non-payment of wastewater thereon on such terms as they deem advisable, and to execute quick claim deeds for the property. The sale or disposal shall be made only after consult, consultation with the planning board and the conservation commission, except for the purposes of clearing title or reconveyance of real estate to the original owner, property to be disposed of by written policy and on terms the select board deem advisable.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Place on the warrant. All in favor?
Move to recommend.
Second.
It's moved to recommend. Question?
Is there any mention of a threshold here of non-payment, a duration of time, or is that in the terms of this, that the select board deems advisable?
That is already determined by law, you know, that they have to go into non-payment for a certain period of time. We will then put in a for, a lien against the property, which notifies the owner again that they have to pay up. If they take no action, then it goes into foreclosure and it's a done deal. You know, it, it goes over a period of years.
It goes over a period of years?
Yes.
Okay, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah.
I just, on the face of it, taking someone's house for wastewater.
It could be for $18 that they don't pay for three years, or whatever it takes us to get through this process.
That's particularly true in Article 24 on property tax.
That one, I'm, yeah, that one I'm much more comfortable with.
This is the same thing. It takes the same periods of time.
Okay.
Okay? The motion is to recommend. All in favor?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
I can call the roll.
No, I just, I'm just battling, I, I guess that's my first time seeing that.
Yeah?
My first time understanding that.
Because you weren't on the select board last May when we did all.
Or coming to town meeting. We go through this every year at town meeting.
Oh, somebody ask it.
Move to place Article 26 on the warrant, see if the town will vote set October 17th, 2016, and April 17th, 2017 as the tax installment due dates.
Second.
Moved and seconded. These are Mondays, because we don't collect property tax on Saturday or Sunday. All in favor of placing on the warrant?
Move to recommend.
Second.
Moved and seconded to recommend. Discussion? All in favor?
Article 27, sorry, I'm jumping the gun. To see if the town will vote to set October 18th, 2016, and April 18th, 2017 as the tax delinquency dates, and to fix the rate of interest on delinquency taxes at 7% interest per year. Question?
Second.
Moved and seconded. It is, the word is delinquent, not delinquency.
Thank you.
You read delinquency, so.
It does say delinquency.
Well, the second time it doesn't, though.
Oh, the first time it says, but not the second. He read delinquency both times.
I did.
Oh, okay.
You were correct, sir.
I'm just referring to the second one.
Thank you.
Can't even tell anymore.
Yeah, I know. All in favor of placing on the warrant?
Move to recommend.
Second.
Moved and seconded to recommend. All in favor? And Owen, before you ask, 7% is set by the state.
Perfect.
Article 28?
Uh, move to place Article 28, to see if the town will vote to fix the rate of interest on delinquent wastewater charges at 7% interest per year.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? None? All in favor? It's on the warrant?
Move to recommend.
Second.
Moved and seconded to recommend. All in favor? That is also a five-fold result.
Article 29, to see if the town will authorize the select board and treasurer on behalf of the town to accept gifts, real estate, and certain funds, including trust funds, that may be given or left to the town.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Who's our treasurer?
Rick.
Rick is?
Yeah.
I figured.
Sometimes it's not, but in this case it is, because that's what our charter says. All in favor of placing on the warrant? It's on the warrant?
Move to recommend.
Second.
Moved and seconded to recommend. No discussion? All in favor?
Move to put Article 30 on the ballot, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to accept these conservation easements, which, the, those conservation easements which the select board deem appropriate in the name of the Town of Rockport, provided, however, that confer, said conservation easements are first considered by the Rockport Conservation Commission and Planning Board.
Second.
Moved and seconded to place Article 30 on the warrant. Discussion? None? All in favor? It's on the warrant?
Move to recommend.
Second.
Moved and seconded to recommend. No discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous for recommendation. Oh, I'll take one. Article 31, to see if the town will authorize the treasurer to waive the foreclosure of tax lien mortgages pursuant to 36 MRSA Section 944 upon a finding by the select board that ownership of the pop, property, subject to the lien, would be contrary to the town's best interest.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Move to recommend.
Second.
Moved and seconded to recommend. Discussion? All in favor? We've recommended. Who wants 32?
To see if the town will authorize the select board to enter into boundary line agreements with abutting property owners to establish the boundary line of any property of the town, including the boundary lines of the rights of way roads, of roads.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous? Who wishes to recommend?
Move to recommend.
Second.
Moved and seconded to recommend. Discussion? All in favor? That is also unanimous.
All right, Article 33, move to place this on the warrant, see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector to enter into a standard agreement with taxpayers establishing a tax club payment plan for commercial and/or residential real estate property taxes whereby, one, the taxpayer agrees to pay specified monthly payments to the town based on his, her estimated and actual tax obligation for current year real estate property taxes. Two, the town agrees not to charge interest on timely payments made pursuant to the tax club agreement. Three, the town authorizes the collector to accept tax club payments for current year taxes which may be due prior to the commitment of those taxes. Four, the agreement is automatically terminated if a scheduled payment is late, and the taxpayer then becomes subject to the same due dates and interest dates and rate as other taxpayers who are not participating in the tax club. Five, only taxpayers who do not have outstanding tax obligations for prior tax years are eligible to participate in the tax club program. And six, taxpayers wishing to participate in the tax club for a particular property tax year shall enter into agreement with the town by a publicly advertised deadline determined by the tax collector.
Second.
Moved and seconded. This is our tax club. Owen?
Should there be a question mark at the end of that whole thing, like there is on all of them? All of them are kind of posed as questions, but that one's not.
Yeah, I think at that period after the point six tax collector, it should be a question mark.
Yeah, true.
You know, I bet it's been on our warrant for several years now without the question marks.
And we fixed the M colon dash.
Right.
No, that was no.
Okay.
M dash. Sorry.
All right. There will be a question mark. Or I should say.
I just extend this meeting one second longer.
And I'm, I would almost agree with you, but there's not much we can do about it.
It's, it's a parent federal.
Consistency being the hobgoblin. I see there are several others in here that don't have question marks.
I would agree with you after.
Let's just leave it as written.
Second.
Next year.
Review.
We'll fix them all next year.
Let's go.
All in favor of placing Article 2033 on the, okay, that should happen.
Move to recommend.
Second.
Moved and seconded to recommend. All in favor? We're through that part.
Oh, my.
Now, I've got to find my.
Okay.
I have a question.
Where we are. What? Yes, what?
Could I, I'm not going to, but could I right now offer an amendment for a new? I was told that it's completely within the rights of anyone on this board to offer an amendment, and that amendment could be an ordinance, in theory. And so if I had the wherewithal to rework Ken's road ordinance wording that we had talked about with, in regards to, please remind me of the road that we were all discussing, I wanted to rework it and add some teeth to it that I thought that Bill and Tracy would be comfortable with. I did not have the time to do that, but I just wanted to state that this is the point of which I would offer that if I had done that, because though I cannot disagree with the, some of the arguments that you all made when we had our meeting, I wish we had continued that discussion, and I believe that not having Jeff there limited our ability to continue that discussion. Peace said.
Okay. Peace said.
Peace said. Unless anyone wants to offer an amendment?
At this point, it hasn't been noticed on the public, on the public hearing warrant.
These weirdo MMA rules accordingly.
There's not an MMA war.
What was the rule?
State of Maine.
State of Maine.
State of Maine rule.
Okay. Moving on, we have accomplished also Item D and E.
So now we're on F, right?
We're on F.
I move to set the town meeting times as stated in the first paragraph of the June 2016 annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Excuse us. We're, we're still having, we haven't taken a break yet. All in favor of the motion? That has been established.
Um, I, oh, where are we? Motion, move to sign the budget validation referendum for MSAD Number 28 and 5 pound CSD warrant and notice of election of Tuesday, June 14th, 2016.
Second.
Moved and seconded, and we have the warrant in front of us, and we're going to sign about a dozen or so, but that, actually, there, there are two components of this. One is the budget meeting, and then is the calling of the budget validation referendum, and then the warrant for the CSD, and then the calling of that budget referendum, all of which will be published appropriately. We just need to vote to sign.
If you make, want to make any changes in the, in the school board budget, you have to be there on May 24th.
Yep. That is correct.
Last year, I was the only person there, other than Betsy Salt and Stall, that wasn't employed by the school district.
Yep. I've been there, done that, seen that. Mm-hmm. So, we have the motion, and it's been seconded. No further discussion? All in favor? We have placed that on the appropriate thing. Do you want to take a short break before we go to Item IH?
Yes. Well, each, yes.
Yes. Just think, we could have been doing all of this at our meeting on the whatever 11th. Oh, there's no way.
Well, let me move.
Is there a reason that Megan still needs to be around? It's up to you.
Unless she thought we needed her here.
We're past money. We're done with the money. Okay. What? I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I said, is there a reason I have to be here?
Oh, you have to, you have to stay here for all the fun.
There's like fifteen things after a German that you have to deal with personally. All right, we're back in session. Uh, we will now move on to the discussion of the size of the future libraries recommended by the library committee and adopted by the select board. I thought those items were gonna be in our packet tonight, but they didn't make it.
Which items?
What the library committee recommendation had been.
And this is basically here from, from, at my request to, it seems like the, as you see in my notes, that there's, that's not copy. There's some confusion, or, I'm tired.
There's some confusion.
There's some confusion as to what the board actually voted, what you were doing. I mean, the, the work the library committee did was the work that needed to be done, and the recommendation is their recommendation. It's the recommendation of the estimate. But what your expectations were as a result of that recommendation and your actions, as I say in my statement, is that it almost seems like the library committee, I mean, the ad hoc library planning committee needs your permission to think beyond just eight thousand seven hundred fifty square feet, as that's their guiding factor in every decision that they make. And so, you know, that, this is here basically at my request to help the library, ad hoc library planning committee, so that they don't get, they don't stumble over this, this eight thousand seven hundred fifty square foot recommendation.
Okay. Um, what, when Rick brought this up to me, or up, I did some quick, just on the spreadsheet thing, and what I did was I, I took Ben's, the library director's initial recommendations to the library committee, and I looked at it as to, you know, this is what was needed to keep what we have already, as far as, you know, this is how many square feet we need to accommodate our stacks. This is how much we have to accommodate the children's collection and the marine room collection. I did, I just factored out the growth. Took that off, or as he termed it, the next great thing. Took those out. I also put in the space that he recommended for the library staff and for those other functions that we, or that the library committee had deemed necessary, like providing some meeting room space or event space. You know, not like was originally considered when we were looking at the RES site where they were gonna hold, have a big, huge meeting room, because that's met by this facility here, either down here or upstairs. But when I did that calculation, I came out with that it could be done without factoring in the growth at somewhere around seventy-eight, seventy-seven, seventy-nine thousand square feet.
Can you clarify?
Hundred.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what did I say? Okay. It is eleven minutes to eleven.
Or total.
This was included the program, this was the programming space, the functional space. It did not include the unassigned space. But, you know, and all I did was go back and I took out all of the expansion, because I, I recognized that the library committee, when they made their recommendation, included space for expansion, space for storage for this and that. And so I, I got it down to what I felt were the bare bone numbers based on what Ben had suggested and the library committee endorsed. And I'm only putting it out there because I said that, you know, I'm saying that, you know, if we wanna say there is a range, well, conceivably, there could be a range. The other question comes down is, if we do go with that, are we creating a situation that in ten years, we're gonna need to make an addition because we're out of space, because we've got growth? And so I'm just putting that out there. Jeff?
I'm gonna get rid of my throat lozenges.
Okay.
I think what you just said in the last three and a half minutes is very good and very important information to get to the ad hoc committee. But I, I would like to reiterate what it is that I voted on originally, from a guidance perspective, and preface that by saying, the ad hoc library committee's job right now is to work with, in this order, the community and the architects to shepherd and, and, and midwife a workable library solution that gets passed. And with that in mind, what, not with that in mind, I mean, as genesis of that, when I voted to recommend the learned and well-composed figures here, those were, in my mind, absolutely a guideline. And all along, I've been saying, let the experts do what they do. If they can say, we understand what's behind this figure for this department, and we can have that department function this way in this physical space, because we're brilliant architects, and you don't need X square, you can do three-quarters of X square feet, that's a win-win-win. But in no way, shape, or form did my particular vote say that's the number you have to adhere to, to the square foot, in, in no way.
So if I understand you, you're saying so long as the objectives are met. We want these programs to be able to be accomplished, or this function to be able to be accomplished?
That's the best-case scenario, but I want, I want a library that passes.
Oh, okay.
And that, the matrix that, that Ben and his team and the, and the library committee put together was very, very important information, and, you know, was lauded by the winning architects. I want to see a library pass, and, and am willing to support what it, and it's, it, I understand, the, the ad hoc committee is in a very, very, it, it, it's, it's in a tough spot. It has to figure out, and it has to midwife this thing into existence. And it has to change the way that it's been acting in order to get it to, to do so.
Why?
But it has to consider
Okay.
some changes in, in its ability to communicate with the people in the town. But in any event, one of five votes, my vote did not say, did not have the intention of saying, this is the square footage you must adhere to.
Okay. Okay, I'll continue down this.
Similar to what Jeff has said, I mean, this process, we had the, the library director provide a wonderful document that talked about the space needs and how he went about calculating those space needs. We then had that pass the, on the library committee, all of whose members had been looking at this problem for a long time. So we got our best estimate of program needs, and I wanna stress the program needs. It so happened that they attached square feet to those program needs, but I always felt that it was the program needs we were voting on, the space numbers that were given us were estimates, and that's the way the motion was when we passed that motion, was estimates of space needs. But the program, the accomplishment of the program is, is paramount, and I think in my, in my estimation of the way we decided to do that. Now, we've progressed to the point where we've had the ad hoc library committee, we've used all that information that we got. The ad hoc library committee had a wonderful process to select an architect, they've done that. Now we have a new set of experts on our side. Architects and, and architects that I assume will have some consultants for the library, and they can look again at our program needs and perhaps have some new and different ideas that, of ways we can accomplish that program. So basically, you know, my thought on this is that I, I agree that that hard square foot number is not a hard number for me. I wanna see the program needs met, and I wanna see the professionals out there have the opportunity to make a proposal that they think will meet our program needs and, and, and get the new library built.
Okay. Tracy?
If the charge of this board changes to get a library built, then you have put the library planning committee in a completely different place than what you originally asked. And it is not that that group will not do their best to get a library passed, but if that is the absolute bottom line, then there are members of that group that seem to be quite willing to say, okay, we'll build a six thousand square foot library inclusive of all unassignable space, and we can get that passed. So we don't care about programming, we're just gonna do this. And somebody floated that the last meeting, which was kind of stunning, because that wasn't something that had been said in the past. And I also think that asking a architect to somehow bend space and time to fit programs into spaces half the size of what we recommend is just not physically possible. We have a certain number of books. You can't just, you know, we don't have a TARDIS, you can't just put them in the corner in that cabinet. When we talk about space, there are specific things that physically need space, and you cannot either use them as dual purpose, which somebody mentioned last time, well, let's just close the children's rooms certain days, and we can have events in there. Well, that's kinda silly, because the children need that room whenever the library is open. So I think that when we start talking about space, and we start this conversation of, oh, we can make it significantly smaller, we don't have to hold to that, you are throwing programming out the window. And so if this group makes that decision, I'm gonna have to decide if this is something I wanna continue to do. Because I, what was important to me personally was that we get the library we deserve, that will serve this town for twenty to fifty years at a minimum. And when we start talking about cutting space, because of some mythical, oh, we can somehow squeeze it into a smaller space, we're fooling ourselves. And I really don't wanna put in the number of hours that I have been putting in in the last few months to be told, oh, we'll just cut it in half, because people will accept that. That's not good enough. People will accept that is not good enough. If this town's gonna spend the time and the money to build a library, we need to build a library we deserve. And there is no specific number, but we have the best people that we could hire, the best people who know this library, who have given us these numbers. And unless we have a situation where somehow magically, which I do not expect to see, that the architects can say, you can take the same space and use it in these two ways, and I really don't see that happening, then that number is really, that number plus the unassignable spaces is what we have to deal with, which is, give or take, a ten thousand square foot building. It's not magic, people. It's a building. It has walls. We're gonna have to have two stairwells and a
Elevator.
Elevator. I mean, it's just reality, people. It's, it's bricks and mortar. And I really think that we're going in the wrong direction by even revisiting this. I don't even think there's a need to revisit this. I think that the information that we gave the library planning committee was clear. If you're going to change what you want, which is get it passed, or create a miracle and make it smaller, if that is the charge that you're now changing for the library planning committee, like I said, I have to seriously consider whether or not that's what I wanna spend the time on, that this is going to be for the next six months at minimum. That's not what I signed on to do. You guys asked me to get over my need to put it in RES. I got over that. I saw a plan that I thought was going to be good for the town. If you're gonna change that charge again by saying we need to have something significantly smaller, so it will pass, that's not what I signed on to do, and that's not what I've already put dozens and dozens and dozens of hours in, as well as the rest of the committee. I would presume there will be people on the committee that will rethink why they're there as well.
Not that you really touched on it, but the idea of this size building is gonna cost the town this much is, they're not comparable, because we have the capital campaign committee out there getting organized, starting to put together their plan to raise money to fund a ma, a majority of the cost. Maybe, you know, and I'm just throwing out numbers here, two-thirds, three-quarters of the cost. Some consultants have, have been in over the last couple of years, and said in a town of Rockport, you should have no trouble raising most of that money from donations. Maybe it'll take you more than a year, but you should be able to do it if you have the right product and the right strategy.
And you have to realize.
And I agree with you that, you know, that, that decision, the recommendation that came from the library committee was for the right product. So.
And I just, I, I wanna say that when we hire a library expert, which they don't bring in a library expert, the partner is their library expert. That is what she does. And so she has a lot of great ideas. I've seen some of their libraries already, and there are things that they think should be more, there should be more of, because of what they're seeing and the other libraries they're, they're developing. So you're also putting us a situation of saying, oh, we could never do that, even though that's what you're seeing, and that's what you think we might need. We can't do that, because there's a, there's a number that we have to stay under or whatever. I mean, for instance, it's mentioned in here about a reading room. The reality is that we're looking at a three-story building. Once you build a three-story building, it's quite silly to make the third story half the size of the other stories. You still gotta build a roof, you still, the, really, the, the differences are minor in what your services have to, you know, your, your HVAC and things like that, that are different for that thousand square feet, for instance, that they had recommended for the reading room on the third floor. You could cut that out. It's not gonna significantly lower the price of the building, but you're never gonna get that thousand square feet back, because now you've built a roof up there. So I, I really need this group to think hard about what it is that you want the library planning committee to do, because there are a few people who are coming up and asking questions that they've never brought up before, and I think those are the people that are coming up with these questions that went to Rick. I think this board needs to think really hard about what you expect of this group. Because if you make a major change, like I said, I have to rethink whether or not I wanna put in the kind of time that needs to be put in to do this right.
Sure. So, one thing right off the bat, and this is just from the middle school visioning committee, they're also going to be doing a capital campaign. So, I would stress to the library committee people that there is a certain amount of money that this community can come up with. So, if they can try to raise that before the middle school people do, there just may be contribution where over time. So, the square footage was never a problem for me. I had said it's more a financial thing for me, and I voted to approve something I thought was bigger than we as a town could afford because of the capital campaigns and the unknown there. So, I'm not tied to the 8,750. I want to see the programming space be what we need, and if the capital campaign people can do what they think they may be able to do, I'm okay with a larger library that meets the next great thing and meets our needs for 30 to 50 years. Just the amount of taxpayer dollars versus private funds needs to be at the ratio that I'm comfortable with. So, one other thing that is interesting to me is I wasn't aware that the third story was what we had ever talked about. It may be the reality. That does kind of contrast. A one-time cost of building a structure, to me, is different than the ongoing costs of hiring more library staff to populate multiple levels. So, I'm not opposed to an 11,000 square foot building at $250 a square is 2.75 million. Add on your architecture, your landscape, and all the various and sundry things. That's a little over $3 million. If we halved that, we're at 1.7 of taxpayer dollars. I'm comfortable with that. So, I don't really know if that gave you any sort of clarity, but I would like to get on to the third floor. And I don't want to get into the minutia of it, but an architect, as great as they may be in library things, may be thinking about the building and not necessarily the ongoing costs. I would hope that they would. But I don't remember in any of our discussions leading up to it, a third floor being part of
We never, we never said how many floors it had to be or could be. We gave them the functionality that we wanted to be accomplished, and what the library committee recommended is a square footage to accomplish those functions. Never specified anything, and we deliberately stayed away from things like that and staffing.
Can I, I, you're right. I want to
Oh, okay.
So, when you start talking about three stories, you, we offered two pieces of property, or the use of those two pieces of property together. To put those two pieces of property together, we would have to move all the surfaces under the street and
I'm aware of all that.
So, there's another half a million dollars, I think, easily to reroute everything to actually build over that street. Those two pieces of property are almost the same size. The park is slightly larger, but not very much. So, the site plan person, which we're meeting with next week, I believe, basically says, the biggest footprint you can put on the piece of property that is at One Lime Rock is 4,000 square feet. Two stories is 8,000 square feet, inclusive. You would have to get everything into that space. That doesn't even begin to cover the 8,750 square feet of programming space. So, therefore, the only way to do it is to make a three-story library.
Or have a two-story library that's smaller.
And that's what we're fighting about right here. That is the question. And
Before we move on.
That's smaller than a three-story building.
Jan, earlier you wanted to say something.
Oh, I want to say lots of things. I will take my turn when you guys have worn each other out, and I can get my points in.
We could be quite late if we did. Maybe if you could, and then I want to ask Ben if he'd like to say anything as well, as our two experts. You as the chair of the ad hoc library, yes?
Should I clarify something before he gets up because he may or may not address something I said?
Okay.
Okay.
What?
First of all, I think I probably put an inflammatory statement in there when I said if a program thing gets cut or something. I may have said something like that. I am not advocating a smaller library, and to use comments like half the size is totally inflammatory. What I am saying, when I said to, first of all, in architecture, magic happens. That's why you go to brilliant people because magic happens. They take Ben's figures. They look at it, and they say, you know what? We could do this, that, and that. And you can have what you need. If you're, you know, if you think it's only four walls and allocated space, you design it. But you're, but what I don't want to see this committee doing is dictating to the architects something that they should not be dictating. They should go to the architects, work with the architects, say, we'll be the go-between, between the architects and the community, and this is the program operations that we want. Now, show us. And, and when I say that the committee has to change, the very fact that there are people on this committee that say, oh, no, it's inviolate. It has to be 8,750, and it can't possibly be anything else, that's not a well-run committee at the point of the gestation that it has to, that they have to do. So, I think the committee's job right now is to create a process that results in a successful library. And that's what, you know, they have to, that's, yeah. So, that's my clarification.
Okay. Jeff, to remind and to remind everyone, the charter from the select board and library committee that every member had to swear a blood oath to, or they could not be a member of the ad hoc library planning committee, was that we would agree to two things. One was that the site would be One Lime Rock Street, or the park, or a combination of the two. We couldn't go wandering around town and finding a new site. The second was that we would agree that the program space was 8,750 square feet. Now, I'm in agreement with Ken that 8,700 square, any 8,700 feet of program, that is, the idea that appears to take 8,750 square feet of program may not take 8,750 square feet. I'm also of the opinion that you are, that architects can do magical things, but they cannot put 8,750 square feet into 7,000 square feet of building. There aren't that many maneuvers that can be done. This is going to be a larger building if we do what the select board and the library committee asked us to do. If you wish to change that, that is your prerogative. Please don't tell me that it's not a well-run committee when I tried to tell people on the committee last time that those were the numbers they agreed to, and that we did not have the authority to change that. Only the select board and library committee had those, had the ability to change that. So, somebody wrote to Rick saying, somebody on the committee, I guess, saying, we should reevaluate this. It shouldn't be that big. We should have the option to be able to do that. Rick didn't share that information with me. Nobody seems to ever write to me about anything that goes on. It all happens in a circle where people go to other members of the community, then they go to the select board, then they go to Rick, and then finally, somebody sends me a copy of an email. I feel at this point quite left out of much of the discussion. It comes to me second or third hand. I will ask you, what is the goal of our endeavor? Jeff, if you say that the goal is to get a library past the voters, fine. We don't know what the voters' tolerance for taxes is. Nobody's asked them. We have estimates of what we think would happen. Rick has a figure in mind. He's a very bright guy who's done this for 30 years or more, and his figure's probably pretty close. Nobody has ever asked the voters, how much more a week would you pay for a library? We did spend three or four years asking people what they wanted in the community. So, we did get the community involvement, and I'm not going to be involved in going back again for more listening tours. We have that kind of input. We don't know how much money can be raised. The library committee is supposed to have made a fundraising committee. It is at this point moribund. Nothing is happening. We sit around at meetings, and we name off the rich people that we know. That's not a fundraising committee. There is no chair. Nobody wants to be chair. In the month and a half or so that they've been in existence, they've not found any new members to help with this. We still sit around over tea, and I'm invited, and Betsy Saltin-Stall is invited, and we talk, we issue the names of the rich people that we know. It's not how you raise any money. There's a hesitancy, and there's no money for hiring a consultant to do an adequate job at this. I worry seriously about raising money for this, how long it will take. Bill, you said that you ran a spreadsheet, you factored in no growth, just basically what we're doing, what we've asked for, and it comes out to 78 or 79 hundred square feet, somewhere in that range. Rounding factor, 8,000. From 8,000 to 9,000, or from 7,800 to 8,800, 1,000 square feet is only a quarter of a million dollars at $250 a square foot. Chump change in this game. And that's for a bare-bones library that will take us no time, no time at all. Ken's point, again, I want to stress that Ken's point about program needs not necessarily equalling square footage is exactly on the target that we need to work with the architects. The three-story building was the building that you saw as their concept design. No more. We didn't buy that building. We bought the architects. They are coming back next week with both the site landscape architect and a plan for another sort of building. That's not probably a three-story building. That would be like a two-story building. Because we're looking still at how do we solve the conundrum of not spending a half or three-quarters of a million dollars to reroute Lime Rock Street right next to some sweet woman who's begged me not to do that, and to move all those lovely sewers, and then spend that money and then bury it. Get nothing for that money, as far as I'm concerned. And also, one of the things that I hear from people in town is, we desperately want the park saved. Well, it isn't a park. To me, it's an empty lot with a couple of stones that have been scattered randomly. The landscape architect is coming up with designs for an actual park. It's going to be really beautiful. It's going to be usable, but not if we stretch a building or parking lots across it. I hate to pave that over. So, we're trying desperately to keep it on the existing library site, also because of the warrant article. I don't want to be sued halfway down the line because we're cut across the property by five feet. Owen, I think, just so that nobody doesn't get hit, I think that a library can outraise a middle school by 100 to 1. Because a middle school is for about 600 kids this big. Where I grew up, you went to one school through the eighth grade, you went to high school in the ninth grade, there weren't any middle schools. And I don't think that we actually even need a middle school. We just need to have, we should have, we worked the high school, and we worked the elementary school. Too late now. But there is only about 600 kids. There's a limited number of parents, and people, I think, my gut tells me, people would rather give money for a library that the entire town uses than for a school that kids spend three years in, and I don't even have those kids. All, I noticed that all the rich people that get named at our meeting don't have children in middle school. They're all older than that typically. So, I think, I think the fight over the middle school will be a fight for taxpayer dollars. Too many bonds is going to kill everybody. But raising money, I think, I think the library can raise more money than the middle school. I think the middle school is going to be the tax hit, and the library is going to be a pleasant surprise.
It does contrast with what you said the library capital campaign is currently at.
Oh, yeah. Oh, no, no, no. Oh, no, no. This is, this is what keeps me up at night is that we are going to be able to pay the architects up until November. The bond will pass for the million and a half or whatever we ask for. We don't have enough money then to break ground, which we've said, and I think the select board was absolutely right. Don't, we're not going to break ground until we can pay for the damn thing, until it's in the, in the, in the pocket. The architects are perfectly willing to take a couple of years off while we raise money. This happens all the time with municipal buildings and with nonprofits and so forth. But if we don't even know by November how much we think we can raise, we don't know how much to ask for in a bond, we're likely to ask more than the public really wants to pay or needs to pay. Maybe it shouldn't come to a vote in November. Maybe it should come to a vote after we've raised $2 million, or after we've had a feasibility study that says you can raise $4 million.
Let's not get into that at this point because
What I, you're right. No, no, you're right. You're right.
There's kinds of nuances that we can talk
What I want is, is, tell me what the charge is for the committee. If the charge is pass a bill, pass a library. Don't care what's in it, as long as people will pay for it. I'm not interested in participating any longer. If the charge is, build us the library, we'll figure out the money later, then I'm still interested in finding the best library that we can find for the town at a certain level of cost. It's going to be a certain level of cost. It's not going to look like the house that's there. It's going to look like a big building because it's going to be a bigger building. 10,000 square foot, 8,000 square feet, from the outside, it's going to be a big building. It's going to be a mega mansion. And it's going to look like a commercial building rather than a Cape Cod house. But it's time. The town deserves it. The town needs it. The people who say, go to Rockland, go to Camden, let the kids go to the school library, I think is a very small minority. They're just vocal. That's what I have to say.
Do you, questions of Jan?
Just a response, and I did a little bit of research before this, and interestingly enough, in both the charge to the ad hoc library planning committee, and in the motion that the select board voted on to approve the library committee's plan, the number 8,750 did not appear. The charge for the library committed, the ad hoc library committee said, using the program outline proposed by the library committee and approved by the select board on November 2015, and with professional assistance, this committee shall write a recommendation.
That's, but that recommendation, the library committee recommendation is where the 8,750 comes from.
Right. But let me, let me read that motion.
Okay.
This is a motion, this is the motion that Tracy made. I went back and looked at the streaming of the meeting.
Okay.
Excellent.
And that motion was by Tracy, I move to accept the library committee's presentation that outlines their estimated space requirements by program. Estimated.
Correct.
And I think that's clear. And I'm not advocating at all taking that number and halving it. Not at all. But I am saying, because it's an estimate, that there should be a little bit of flexibility there. That's all.
And the one thing that, and there is
And I think that Bill's, Bill's range was actually reasonable. I think
And I think, and I think his range is reasonable also. But if you look at the building that we're currently occupying, the rental, that's 5,000 square feet, and it's crowded.
Yeah.
More, you say, more than 5,000?
And then 5,000 square feet also includes all the utilities, the unassigned space.
Okay, okay. I'm not, I'm not aware of that. So, that's maybe 18 or 20, 20 percent of So that's maybe eighteen or twenty, twenty percent of the...
But all I'm, all I'm trying to reiterate is what I said at the beginning, is that our focus, I think, was program needs.
Absolutely, and it should be, that's what it is.
And if it ends up being eight thousand square feet instead of eighty-seven fifty, and your committee feels it meets the program needs, and the library committee, and Ben feels it meets the program needs...
Then it's a success.
I think that's great. I think it's unreasonable to think that we're going to cut that down to five thousand square feet and make it work. Like Tracy's saying, you know, half the space, I don't think that's going to work. All I'm saying is, is I think that there's enough flexibility built into the charge as we passed it in the first place to allow you to look at that. Maybe they come back and say, "Well, you really can't do it, you need ninety-two hundred square..." I don't know. But I think some flexibility there around that number within a reasonable amount is acceptable.
Now, let me, let me ask a question. There are, I think, three of the five library committee members are up for reelection?
Correct.
Not everybody's running again?
Well, there's two that are up for reelection, one has resigned, and there is a new...
Okay, so there's going to be...
There's three openings.
There are likely to be, there's going to be at least one new person, I think.
Two new people.
Okay, a couple of new people. One person who's running, I know, had a, had a bit in the Free Press about how all that was really necessary was to rebuild the exact same library. So let's assume that the balance of votes changes in the library committee. What happens? Can, can the library committee, a new library committee, July first, say, "Okay, we're going to vote again, and we're going to vote, and we get a six thousand square foot vote"? Then what happens, Bill?
Well, we've already had the agreement with the library committee that they are responsible for the programs in the library. We and the town, through the town manager, are responsible for the physical structure.
What if the new library...
We've asked them for their recommendation, they gave it to us, we accepted it, we've set you on a course.
Okay.
If they change that number, you know, I'm sorry, we're down that path already.
Thank you.
Now, that's my opinion.
Right.
We've already moved down that path to create that new physical structure for them to do their programs in.
Right. Because it would be a costly, since we've hired architects, a costly mistake to spend three or four months building a library and then having somebody say, "Oh, no, we don't want that anymore, we want a different, we want a much smaller building."
Well...
Rules have changed.
I mean, the library committee can recommend to us a program, just as the current library committee did, and then this board can, can vote one way or another on that at that time, if that comes to pass.
The library committee's charge is really the overseeing of the endowments.
Right, right.
And, and that's where that stands.
Okay.
So...
All righty. Any other questions?
Yes. Jeff?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, yes, you had asked.
So, again, back to my plea that you concentrate on process, and that's what's going to get a library passed. You made the comment that you are not going to be involved with any more listening, was your quote. Can you clarify that?
Let me, let me rephrase, Jeff. Every single thing that we do is open. Everything from here on in, other than tomorrow's meeting, is going to be streamed. We have a lot of publicity. We have a dedicated email drop for people to, to send us comments. Anybody that asks a question, the question gets brought up at, at the next meeting, the question gets answered, gets put on the webpage for people to see. We are, I am, I am, every meeting that we have has a public comments section where people can talk. But I, I think the idea of going back to square one and saying, "Let's ask the people what they want in the library," is a way of avoiding the decision, avoiding the difficulty of convincing people to pay more taxes or to give more money to their thing. To me, it's a way of, it simply kicks the can down the road, another two or three or four years. I think it's, I don't ever want to discount the community that I live in. I think it's a really intelligent community, a lot of really bright people, good place to live, glad I live here. But if it's only the squeaky wheel that gets the grease, we will end up with a library that serves the needs of three or four hundred people who don't have children, who don't use the library except to speak French or play Mahjong. And I think that I can't, I'm not going to live long enough to see this library get a ribbon cutting. I'm not going to spend more time than I need to on a library that I don't believe in.
I need to make a comment. Jeff, I was really offended by you saying that this was a poorly-run committee. Jan has worked tirelessly to make this happen. He has gotten a group of people who, for the most part, had never met before, to work together to shoot, to get an RFP out within, an RFQ out within days after they got our marching orders. He kept everybody in line, he got everybody in, he gave this group an incredible framework for getting what's already been done, done. And I am offended on Jan's part that he has spent literally countless hours on this over the last couple of months, that you would say that it's a poorly-run committee.
Yeah, so there.
I expect an apology from you. I think it's really horrible.
You want to give me half a second?
I know, and I'm just saying, I do, because this is someone who's worked incredibly hard for this town.
Enough said, sir.
Let him, Jeff?
Yeah.
What?
I, I don't expect an apology, nor would I ask you to give one. You said what was on your mind, and that's all I, that's all I want to hear from everybody.
Would it be helpful to have an explanation?
Sure.
That was a reaction to the, my understanding that the last meeting, or the last two meetings, have been gridlocked with a significant reluctance to look at anything besides eighty-seven fifty, and that, to me...
The last meeting...
Hang on, just, let me just finish my sentence. And that, to me, represents an insufficiently high level of leadership.
What I said, this happened at the last meeting, and what I said several times, and I'm afraid I got louder as I said it, that's possible, is that this committee runs under the authorization of the Select Board and the library committee and agreed to certain parameters, and that we didn't have the authority to change those parameters, and if we disagreed with them, we needed to go to the Select Board and the library committee and change the marching orders, and here we are.
Have you, have you learned anything tonight that changes that, your position?
Only insofar as what I'm hearing is that square footage and program space are not equivalent, and I already knew that, and so did the architects. And we've been working on that, and they, in fact, are coming back with different designs because there was pushback from the committee, and that's as it should be, that we are pushing the architects to do, to not simply deliver us a solution, but to work with us to understand the whole problem, the community-wide understanding of the problem and the, and the goal, and to come back with a clever, smarter solution. Tomorrow, I have another meeting without the architects. The goal of it was to become, how do we become, we were a great committee for picking an architect, how do we become a great committee for working with an architect? And I have, I will be talking to Cynthia tomorrow morning for an hour or so before the meeting, and asking, and I gave her the same question two days ago, to have, give her time to think about it. What do they expect from us? What do they want from us? What do we want from them? How do we work together in the best fashion? But through everybody's experience of library design, there's a certain amount of square footage that you allow for a person in a meeting room. So if you want a meeting room for four people, there's a certain amount of square footage that's involved. You want a place where you can show a movie for seventy-five people, there's a certain amount of square footage involved. We're very lucky that we're going to be living across the street from an opera house, which has room for seventy-five and room for four hundred. We don't have to do that in the library. I wouldn't expect that if we pushed all, if we had that huge reading room and we pushed everything aside, we could probably show a movie to twenty-five or thirty people. It may never come to that, because we may have to cut back in certain areas, and so that if we want to show a movie to twenty-five people, we come over and use the opera house, and that's the way it is. And quite frankly, the system here is to die for.
We are starting to run really long on that. Owen wants to speak as well. What did you...
I just, I just want to say, I would love for you to prove my statement wrong and to show us brilliance.
Let's not get into personality, let's not get into personality on this.
No, I'm not taking it as a personality thing. No, I'm interested in what you say.
What I'm saying is that your next challenge, which I think you just enumerated well, is to, is to lead this group in a, in a peaceful way that interacts with the architects and the town, and go forward from here, and that would make it...
Trying to.
That would make it a very successful, successfully run.
Owen?
I just had a thought. Would it be helpful, from your perspective and your perspective primarily, but from us as well, to set a no lower-than threshold and say, "We're still aiming for the eighty-seven fifty, but that's not a hard and fast number, we want programming space, we want adequate programming space, but we do not want to see this go anywhere below this number." And I would possibly just throw out your seventy-eight hundred, and I'm just, it's kind of just an exercise in thought. Would it be helpful to, then people on your committee that were tied to possibly a six thousand square foot, they have a decision to make, that my number is lower than the number that the Select Board set as our lowest threshold, and so I'm going to step down from this committee because I won't be able to get what I need and follow Select Board guidance?
When we formed the committee, we gave them the charge, eighty-seven fifty, these are the programs that were listed out or enumerated, trying to go and say, "No less than this," becomes the new boundary. And, yeah!
It does.
It does, exactly.
There are people who are immediately going to say, "Okay, we can make it a thousand square feet smaller."
There are also people that would have resistance to that, and if you could get, if you allow the architects to work their magic like we've been talking about...
They will come in with a seventy-seven hundred square foot building...
Because that's what people will accept.
Let me get, let me give a possibility, Owen, maybe this will satisfy you. Rather than the five of you making an arbitrary, because that's basically what it is, is an arbitrary number...
Yeah.
I can, you know, I intend to work with Ben and to work with the architects on trying to figure out what programming is most important, what triage might happen, if it had to happen, and what could that do to things? How can spaces be used multiply? If that's a word. We already decided at the last meeting that we were going to have books in the elevator, save space. How can, what is a lower limit on, not square footage for the building, but a lower limit, for lack of a better term, on program space? On program space? And then challenge the architects to make physical spaces do double duty.
That's actually, the number that I grabbed was not an overall square footage, but a kind of programming space. And the only reason that I brought it up was, we had given certain guidance with some flexibility, and we're coming up to a new portion of this where there is resistance with people trying to bring it far away from that number. And I'm not opposed to fluctuations within that number, but if we were to set a lower limit, then at least the folks that are quite vocal about this would have a decision to make.
And they would say, "It's that limit, and no bigger." That's, that's why we set the eighty-seven fifty, because that satisfies the program needs that have been brought to us. Now, I can understand, okay, the children's room, we set at fifteen, fifteen hundred square feet. Well, to build it in this box that's going to be the library, that cube, well, we can only get fourteen hundred and seventy-five square feet. Well, that's understandable, and because of the way it comes out, instead of the circulation desk area getting five hundred square, they really get five hundred and twenty-five square feet. Those are reasonable. Going from eighty-seven hundred to seventy-seven hundred is not reasonable. I was making that comment, saying, just so we would start thinking what we wanted, and if we go to that, that cuts out all the growth, that cuts out all the future things that we know we're going to need. Because, as I, you, somebody said it, we're building a library for the next twenty to fifty years. We're not building one that, before the bond is paid off, we're going to have to make an addition to. That kind of thinking got us into what we have now, that's, yeah, it had a little small one, and now it's had six or seven, and even after the last addition, before they opened the doors, they said, "We're already too small."
I just suppose I'm looking at it differently, just a different perspective. I thought maybe it would be a useful tool to have people, and I, I guess I stand corrected.
Then why did we vote on this? And yes, you're right, we didn't vote on a number, we voted on the library committee's recommendation, both for programs and space. We didn't write down the square footage, it was already provided to us. We endorsed it.
It is an estimate.
It was an estimate.
It is an estimate.
And that's, that's, I guess the message that I'd like to get to the committee is that, you know, don't get hung up on a particular number, and that's, in that sense, I think we've already got one number out there, we don't need more numbers, it just makes, makes their work more difficult. But the general idea of what the program requirements are. And so if we come in and, you know, we have the eighty-seven fifty numbers out there, let's say they come back with eighty-two hundred.
No, that's not, that's not, that's not the issue, Ken. That's fine. The issue is a committee member raising their hand and saying, "Well, I think six thousand feet," that our job is to get it sold to the public, and that six thousand feet will sell. And that's where I have to say, "Our job is not to sell it to the public, that's somebody else's job. Our job is to design the right library." And the six thousand square feet is, is a non-starter.
We are, we are closing in on midnight.
We certainly are.
There are still four items on this agenda, and I'm going to suggest that unless something is extremely urgent regarding the Camden-Rockport Route One sidewalk plan, or given that LD-1649 was already passed by the legislature, that we move on. We have to deal with the reappearance of election quirks, and we do need to do the request for proposal for legal services tonight.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on, I just, Ben is here, he sat here all night.
Yeah.
If Ben wants to say something, I'd love to hear from him.
Well, do you want to come up there?
Please. The people at home, they're still watching.
I'll be, I'm sure they are. You know, I, I will be real quick. I don't think that anybody on that committee is sort of married to the eighty-seven fifty. I think that they all know that there's going to be wiggle room, up or down, depending on what the architects do in each one of those spaces. I definitely think part of the philosophy is, at least my philosophy, is to have spaces that are used a hundred percent of the time, or as close to that as we can, so looking for efficiencies is something that we're doing. I understand that there is going to be a limit, both on cost and size, for any new library that the town can bear. I think that's absolutely appropriate and, and something that needs to be thought of. You know, I also think that it is time to build aspirationally, and we should try to get the best that we can get. You know, that's going to be my take, though. I'm the library director, I want the best library for the community, that is going to be what I'm going to say all the time. So that's, that's where I come down on that. The three-stories thing is something we're looking at. With a well-designed building and different control points and some technology, we can do it without hiring more staff. It's something I've already met with the architects about, we've been talking about it, it is... It's something I've already met with the architects about, we've been talking about it, it is one of my bigger concerns, because the building is a one-time cost, staffing is continual. Already, we're gonna have some continual extra costs, because we're going to any extra story, you add elevators, you know, you add things that you have to do maintenance on. So, but that is something that, that I'm particularly interested in. I don't wanna set myself up to get into a building that I can't manage with the staff that I have. I don't wanna move into something without a plan on how to deal with it, I think that would be ridiculous. Fundraising, I think, you know, that committee, I think, will come along. It's gonna get there, I don't really have too many doubts on that. I think they're a little leery about jumping fully into the pool without knowing that it's passed, that we're gonna do it. But I'm not a fundraiser, I went to school to be a librarian, I have no idea how to fundraise. I mean, people have degrees in that, that, that are well beyond me. So, there's a lot of work to be done, both in design and sort of management of a new building. I think efficiencies, again, are important. I think that, you know, having that eighty-seven fifty, that is a really cultivated number that people have looked for. Again, if we go down a little bit, because efficiencies are made, I don't think anybody's gonna freak out, as well as if some, if we go up a few feet, you know? I don't think that's gonna happen, because I think the community's saying, no, don't go up anymore. But if you just sort of open the door to slide, you're gonna start losing things, and I can tell you where we're gonna start losing things. And so when we get to that point, it'll be, well, that's not there because we got smaller. And I mean, and I can walk anybody through that, whoever they want, whenever they want. Again, with architects, they'll have their own opinions, but there are things that I could say, oh, I, this is probably the first thing that I would say could go, just based on best-case practices and such. So that's it, I don't wanna go any later, but if you have any questions, I'm here. Um, that's mine, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And one final question to Jan, I guess, do you feel like you got any better guidance from us tonight?
I got affirmation of the same guidance that I got, with the understanding that both you and I understand tolerances, and that, that this is not like, no, eighty-seven forty-nine won't do, please go back and redraw it. No, eighty-seven fifty-one is, we're paying too much for that, no. I don't, I was trying to think, you know, it's gonna be like plus or minus five percent or something like that, I don't, I don't know, but it's going to disappoint everybody, and then I'll be fine. Ben will lose some of his spaces, some people will have a bigger library than they want. Somebody will want a green, and it's gonna be blue instead, somebody's gonna be disappointed, somebody's ox is gonna get gored. I, I want a really nice library in this town, I like libraries a lot. And I'm putting a lot of time and effort into it, and so what I wanted was, if you wanna change course, terrific, let me know. If you don't wanna change course, terrific, let me know. And that's kind of what I heard tonight, was, yeah, we're all thinking about this, and we're all concerned about it, and we're all cautious about the same kinds of, of issues, money and space and future and present, and elementary schools and middle schools and all of that kind of stuff, yeah, we know that, too. And we're gonna do what we can, we're a young committee, we just started this in December, it's only April, and we've done a lot of stuff, and we're just now getting on first-name terms with the architects, there's a long way to go. You've given us a very tight deadline. You want hard information by July, which is the day after tomorrow, I think. So, we're, we're, we're running, we're not walking through this, but we'll be as careful as we can, and we will make through deadlines.
Okay.
If the voter, the voter say no, then we'll start over again.
And as far as that committee goes, I mean, that committee has been the best to work with out of any committee I've ever seen. I mean, it's a huge committee, it's really diverse, you know, things got a little heated at the last meeting, but that was one meeting out of, what, like, twelve that we've had? And it was like fifteen minutes, it was like somebody striking out once in a season of baseball. So like, you know, I wouldn't take that as, as, as any indication of us going forward, that's one data point, we've got lots.
We've been doing theoretical stuff, now we're doing practical stuff, and so now the costs have gone up for everybody, and we're all aware of it. So, that's, I think, what happened, I got overheated, I'm gonna spend tomorrow apologizing. You know me long enough to know my temper. And so, I did not, as I have in the past, I did not leave over a table trying to strangle somebody. So I thought I was, I was pretty good. Good night, all.
Thank you, Jan.
Oh, thank you, Jan, man, I missed out on that vote.
All right, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask this again.
Sidewalk plan.
My only thing was.
What is going on with the sidewalk?
We have an MDOT meeting, and, and.
Okay.
And that was my only, I don't mind tabling it, but I believe that that meeting's coming up.
Right, I don't know what the date is, you.
You sent it out to me, it's sometime in the not-too-distant future, like, two weeks from now, or something like that.
You were, Mike is go, I believe Mike is going, and you, as a member of the pathways committee, would be going. As the pa, as select board's liaison to the pathways committee.
I can kind of breeze through this, but if, if you guys don't want to, it's totally fine.
It's midnight.
Sure.
Yeah. We have full faith in pathways protecting both towns.
Yeah, the one big thing is that what we propose is a different orientation than what MDOT was thinking. So. Yeah. And what the pathways committee was looking for was for you all to, I don't believe, vote, but basically give approval to us proposing this to MDOT versus MDOT's own design, which is different than this.
This is what we've been talking about all along, down the coastal side of Route One.
Except.
Except when you get to the intersection with the traffic light, putting in a crosswalk.
Right, MDOT wants to cross over from Corey Hill to that rock crest, to that motel, and then go down to the Hannaford, and then cross back over, and then go down.
My opinion here, people are gonna get off that bus, and this is the reason we're doing it, they get off the bus, and they toddle on up along that side, because they don't wanna cross Route One.
I like this way better.
I don't think that, you know, we're gonna change human nature, even if they put the crosswalk.
The one kind of sticking thing was Camden Street, because it wise out, and this was new to me, and I think it's brilliant, a small triangular island to create a safe point.
That's fine.
That keeps us all on that same side, we're not crisscrossing back and forth. And the only other bit was it goes further than Leonard's, than we had anticipated, but that's depending on MDOT's budget.
Okay. Yeah.
So.
Going further is better.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Going shorter is not acceptable.
Yeah.
My opinion.
This is good.
Okay. Do we wanna talk about LD sixteen forty-nine, it got passed? It's vetoed, and I don't think they're gonna be able to override it.
Okay.
Let's go on, we've had the municipal, uh, legal services.
Okay, I move, I move to approve the request for proposal for municipal legal services, and to have the town manager distribute accordingly.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
And I will say, I think Stacy did a nice job capturing most of our concerns from the workshop, and I think the document is in good shape.
Is that the consensus?
Ken says it is.
No further discussion, all in favor of passing the motion?
I move.
Turn away.
I move to approve the list provided by the town clerk, Linda Greenlaw, for the reappointment of election clerks from May first, twenty sixteen, through April thirtieth, twenty eighteen.
Second for discussion.
It's been moved and seconded.
We do have to, I believe, remove Betsy Salt and Stall, because she is on the ballot.
But she may not get the nomination.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And she may not get the nomination either.
Well, but she's on the ballot to get the nomination, that, that'll be an election.
I wasn't, I'm saying May.
Just because you're on the list doesn't mean you're gonna work.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, then I'm fine with it.
Okay, move, motion has been made to reappoint, all in favor? That is done?
Can I?
Uh, yes, would you please?
Can you let me finish?
Did we make it under midnight?
I said move to adjourn, somebody seconded it.
Second.
Oh. Do we have any discussion on this?
No!
All in favor? Jeff? Oh, okay, I, I thought maybe you wanted to stay here a little.